Call the August twentieth city council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, you give us a prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
My father will come once again before your presence to say thank you, God, for the soft journey to service servants of this city. I ask for the father you bless these proceeding, bless all that are gathered here today, and thus in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pray for the future student flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on August twentieth nineteen seventy-five, Viking One, an unmanned US Panathinaeros probe was launched from Cape Canaveral, Florida on admission to Mars. On June nineteenth nineteen seventy-six, the spacecraft entered orbit around Mars and devoted the next month to imaging the Martian surface with the purpose of finding an appropriate landing site where it's launching. On July twentieth, the Viking One lander separated from the orbiter and touched down, becoming the first successful spacecraft to land on the surface of Mars. The same day, the craft sent back the first close-up photographs of the rust-colored Martian surface. Fact of the day.
All right, welcome to the public meeting of the city council of the city of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silence. The city council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the city council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflects justice, integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the council chambers. All right, public comment.
Tulip Garden? Hi, I have been examining some heat patterns in Orange County and Canopy, and we have lost a great deal of Canopy in just the last five years. A lot of trees have been bulldozed, and then we lost a lot from the hurricanes. And I know we have a tree bank and we need to get them up on public properties, but we also need to encourage our citizens to replace their trees. And we have a lot of people going around with little pickup, with trucks and trailers and chainsaws and butchering the trees because they see an opportunity to make some money. But they don't know what they're doing. They're out there right now during hundred-degree days, cutting up trees and taking off branches and making them little lollipops. And this is dangerous to the trees in this heat, and I'm sure Commissioner Smith can agree to this, that you don't cut up oak trees in hundred-degree weather and butcher them during this heat, it stresses them out. And yet, that's happening. It reduces their lifespan and it can kill them. It lets insects and diseases take advantage of them. What I see is just in a couple of years, a few years, we've gone from being a green area with Canopy to suddenly being a heat sink. We have, you can absolutely see when you look at the heat pattern of northwest Orange County, you see a red streak going right up through Apopka, where it was that way in Orlando and the northwest, the north-to-south corridor and along Orange Blossom Trail. But now it goes all the way up through Apopka, and it is why we are so hot. And it's the reflection of the concrete and the lack of trees, no Canopy. Another thing is, is we need to get trees out where we have removed trees or where trees aren't, and we need water absorbed. I have a long list from the Florida Friendly Tree Landscaping Program of trees that absorb a lot of water. And you can look at the large oak trees, transpire forty thousand gallons of water a year, and so do the large maples. And if we look at like even the Leicester Road Pond, it fills up and the marsh behind it won't take any more water where that water is supposed to go. If you were to put in that barren grass area around it, water-absorbing trees, forty thousand gallons a year would be absorbed.
Thank you. Next up?
Good evening, my name's Ian Campbell, I live in Park Meadow Drive, Magnolia Park Estates. It's been a while since I've been here, I think the last time I was here was when you guys were talking about increasing our water rates forty something percent last year, but you did us a favor, settled on twenty-four percent, only to send another letter out to be fifteen point five percent increase this year, so you're back over your forty percent you wanted last year. I don't understand how you can go on the news and study your way through and, you know, interviews and say it's the cost of this and cost of that, but yet, you're trying to figure out, but we're gonna buy six hundred thousand dollar piece of property, you don't even know what you want to do with it, taxpayer money. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned about how the money's being spent in the city. I look around, I see all the development going on, I see all the lands, trees being mowed and concrete buildings going up, Kelly Park is being destroyed, that whole area up there doesn't even look the same as it did twenty-four months ago. I hear people talking about, we need to take judicial action against people who don't want to sell their land to us so we can do what we want with it, which is absurd. I don't know what, where we living, I mean, I'm very disgusted at what's going on in the city. I would like to see Doge come up in here after they get done with Orlando and figure out where money's going, whose hands it's transferring to, whose buddies are getting contract deals, what's going on with the money, because this is not right. You can't sit here and say, we're gonna raise the rates, raise the rates, raise the rates, and then turn around and say, oh, we're gonna buy a six hundred thousand dollar piece of property, we don't even know what we're gonna do with it. How do you expect the citizens to accept that and swallow that and say, yeah, okay, I don't mind raising my rates? Now, if there's a legitimate reason, I'm all for it, but I haven't seen it, especially with all the people coming to Apopka. You know, we talk about impact fees, I'm not well-educated in civics and economics and all that, but I can see a lot of people coming to this city, and I can see a lot of revenue coming into this city per the taxes and all the impact fees and all that stuff. So to raise the rates on the people that have already been here is absurd. I think Doge really needs to come up here and take a look at what you guys are doing with our money. Thank you.
My name's Dr. Jim Moyer, I'm elected Orange Soylent Woodard Conservation District to Supervisor, which includes Apopka. We're celebrating our eightieth year, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five through June twenty-second of next year, and I was late, I had pictures, and pictures do, they're worth a thousand words, but Black Sunday was April fourteenth nineteen thirty-five. It's called Black Sunday because the sun was hundred percent blocked and the dirt just covered the whole thing. The picture that was shown to demonstrate Black Sunday was taken from Stratsford, Texas, April fourteenth nineteen thirty-five. Just five months ago, one month short of ninety years later, eighty miles away, there is another picture, almost as bad. In nineteen thirty-five, twenty people died in Kansas because of dust inhalation. Five months ago, eight people died in Kansas because the visibility was so bad, they got in an accident and people died. The picture in the journalists used eighty miles from where the original one was has tractor trailers all over the road and everything. We are on the verge of a global crisis, climate crisis, and I'm not trying to be an alarmist or something, this is what the experts are saying. In the next twenty-five to a hundred years, we're on the verge, and we just have to be ready. We have to protect. Now, I noticed that there's Wakiva Spring and Rock Springs Basin management action planned. Whole list of cities and other people are on it. I don't know how, and I'm relatively new to the Orange Soylent Woodard Conservation District, but we're not on it. But I want to help with that project. It's primarily, if not entirely, in my district, and I'm here to help. If it requires training, I'll do training. Five years ago, I did some personal calculations, and fifty percent at the time of my whole entire life, I spent formally trained, learning this, this degree, this certification, et cetera. Thank you, God bless you all.
Leroy Bell, Apopka. I also watched the interview. Yes, people can build on their own land, they have a right to build on their own land, only they don't have the right to build when it infringe on somebody else's property. On this planning committee that you have with Mr. Gussler over, I didn't come to the meeting for one reason, because all this planning of growth and building down on King Road, nowhere in the literature that we find ESA, EI, EIA, which is Environmental Site Assessment, or either Environmental Impact Assessment. What these things does, it keep us from getting into trouble like Border Lake, Clear Lake Estate. It's where they do tests and test on the soil to see which way that the water drains or what does it flood, even down to contamination. We know that the dump is not in compliance. We know benzene, benzoyl, ammonium and all this is down there. People is dying from this, but yet and still, you're chugging luck along, keep pushing over, just growing, growing. Managed growth is fine, but just, just to be growing, building, just for the kickback, like the young man said, somebody getting green. With my, with the last little time I have, my daughter had an accident maybe about three weeks ago. I encountered two police officers from Apopka. I made it to the scene. Those two officers were professional, kind, nice, and I think did a remarkable job. But then, on the other hand, we have a few police officers that don't even need to be there. Like I say, we're still calling for diverse training, diversity training, and we're still calling for some to be fact.
Good evening, everyone, Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids of Apopka. First and foremost, I want to clarify that what I'm about to say is not in response to the mayor approaching me after the last meeting regarding comments made by others. My passion lies in serving and guiding others to improve and be their best selves. Therefore, I must lead by example. My decision was made immediately upon returning to my seat during the last city council meeting. I sincerely apologize to the council and the general public for exceeding my allotted time and not adhering to the council's decorum. In all fairness, the mayor did attempt to stop me at the three-minute mark. I do not receive any special treatment from this city, nor do I believe I am entitled to any. I will not make any excuses. I want to express my gratitude to the commissioners who continue to support my efforts in serving the Apopka community. Hopefully, one day each of you will also support our cause. I am grateful for this platform that allows me to connect with the public at no cost. I would like to urge the council to consider extending public comments back to four minutes per person. I would hate for anyone to feel unappreciated because I did not have enough time to acknowledge them. I promise to adhere to the established decorum going forward, even if it remains at three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, guys, this is my first time ever doing this. Nicole Gilbert, I live in the Dumberge Community. I'm here about the water bill, too. I am a single homeowner, I work two jobs, things are ridiculous. I barely, like, I work two jobs, so I don't wash much clothes, I don't wash my car ever, I don't do anything. I just put two thousand dollars into my grass because my saw is, my grass is dying. So now, this is probably gonna die, too. But the water bill, this, it's ridiculous, like, they need to do something. No other city, my family members live in Winter Garden, Oakaway, their bills are not like this. The, it's, the rate is ridiculous. So I feel like I live in a third-world country. I'm scared to wash, I'm scared to cook, I'm scared to do anything that has to do with water. And that's, that's sad, seeing where we live. And like I said, I work two jobs, I work serving this community in a healthcare pediatric office, and I do that and urgent care for them, and I'm scared, literally, to do anything, to run water for anything. I have a sensor on the sink so I can just turn it off real quick while I'm doing something, or if it's on too long, it turns off by itself. I have changed all my, everything to like the lowest amount. It's, it's just sad that people have to live like that, and I don't know if anybody else does that, but I was in a relationship, married for twenty-three years, husband left, now I'm by myself, and it sucks. It's hard, and this, like, nobody cares. And I just wish that somebody will care, and I really give gratitude to the guy who went on the news, Aaron, whatever his name was with a C, amazing, loved it, got it out there, maybe more people will complain about it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is for everyone who can hear my voice, everybody sitting in the chamber. In the city of Apopka, the state of Florida, and in our country, too many good people are standing by watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it, being completely silent. It's time to stand up against hate, it's time to stand up against corruption, and it's time to stand up against racism. I don't disagree with Leroy on a lot of things, but I disagree with him on this. He say, you know, Sebastian, you say that all the time, that's your, that's your anthem. No, it's not my anthem. It's the kryptonite to hate, to corruption, and to racism. If you just think about it, what I just said, if we do that, when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth to the point the truth doesn't matter. And right now, the way we at, when you know something is abnormal and you don't saw it so much, you don't even care no more. Then, when you find out the truth, it don't even bother you to do anything about it. Where are we at as a country, where are we at as a people? Until we start to understand that everybody that we elect to be a leader in this country, they gotta understand, and you gotta make them understand, that principles matter, integrity matters, honesty matters, accountability matters, responsibility matters, morals matters, ethics matter, character matters, procedures matter, leadership matters, laws matter, justice matters, and all God's people matter. Just think, if we conduct ourselves with that, what a glorious place for any country, not just for America, but for every, for everybody. Now, when I say we normalize things, we don't wait to one, two city administrators, and we're not even looking for another one, why? Because we allow the mayor to pick whoever he want to pick to put in that seat. That's our corruption started. I have nothing against the city administrator, but he hadn't went through the proper channels. And if he was qualified, the last two times we was looking for a city administrator, you guys should have selected him. But you go and pick somebody from another state, and he stay here less than a year, and he's gone. This cannot keep competing itself over and over and over again. The more people that we have to come up and use their voice, things will change. Until we start doing that, things are gonna stay the same. So I know change is coming, just stay the course, please.
Albert McKimme, three six zero three Golden Gem Road. As I look around, I'm reminded every time I come in here, just how lucky we are. We have a fantastic building, it's beautifully appointed. When I watch other municipalities on YouTube, they've got a few tables roundabout, a few mics. We have given you our representatives everything that we can give you to represent us. Question I have for you today, commissioners, are the residents of this city getting value for money? Yeah, fair question. The value of this building is not based on bricks and mortar, it's based on its value for you to represent adequately the needs of the public. It's not happening, and it's not happening because three minutes for public comment. During that public comment, we don't get to ask questions, we can't direct our attention to anyone, commissioner or the mayor. It's general questions. And the unfortunate part is, usually, I ask questions and I know what the answer is gonna be, we're not gonna get an answer, you're gonna sit there, take notes, and something will happen somewhere down the line. Not acceptable. How much does it cost to run this building? It really doesn't matter how much it costs, it costs the same every day, whether it's people of this building or not. So what we are doing, every day this building is empty and it doesn't represent the public, you're wasting public money. How do we resolve that? It's pretty simple. Let's start to do public workshops, where it's not public comment, where we can come in and we can discuss how we feel we can better serve our community, how we feel you can better serve our community. The fact of the matter is, we really are the value that's inherited in this community. There's so many of my brothers and sisters in here who have great creativity, but what good does it do? It does nothing, because we are so frustrated that our voice really doesn't count. Because we are so frustrated that our voice really doesn't count. And this is why often degenerates into a bit of a fracas. Let's start, commissioners, to use City Hall. We have asked if we can use City Hall. The answer was no. And we asked how much it would cost if we wanted to use City Hall. We weren't allowed to use it. As a nonprofit, this, Apopka Cities for Order's government should have access to this chamber. And if they don't, commissioners, you have the, the ability to, to use your cash that you have as a charitable donation to entities who want to use City Hall for discussion.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. I'm frustrated with the citizens who bitch, moan, and complain on Nextdoor, Apopka Rants and Raves, Facebook, and other media, yet fail to call, email, or show up at meetings like these, and fail to vote. We allow our mayor and commissioners to ignore citizens' concerns, approve one development after another, knowing we don't have the infrastructure in place to support it. Our city allows developers to put rooftops and pavement, creating flooding throughout the city, and yet we don't allow for proper drainage. Developers sod as much as they want. We're restricted as citizens. Developers water anytime, day or night. Citizens are under water restrictions. Reclaimed water pressure is low, requiring lawn sod replacement. We allow the city to fail to do due diligence, preventive maintenance, and incremental increases, resulting in last year's 20% rate increase and this year's 25% in utility fees. Fact-based budgeting is not possible without side-by-side comparison. This administration's failure to provide our commissioners with that tool leads to another inaccurate wing-and-prayer budget this year. Of our 60,000 residents, only 20 attended the three strategic planning community forum meetings last week, and only 75 participated in the online survey. The absence of the mayor and one of the commissioners at these meetings speaks volumes as to planning. Speaking of planning, our new all-inclusive playground requires our children, handicapped children, to trek 900 feet to the nearest bathroom and water. Plus, there's no fence or any obstruction between the driveway immediately butting the property. The city's proposed a couple of roundabouts to slow traffic on the Ponkin Road. With the addition of over 2,000 vehicles with pollution acres, it's like spitting in the wind and then acting surprised when it comes back on you. Ponkin Road will become another Golden Gem Boy Scout. Kelly Park Road, due to the lack of adequate lanes, sidewalks, water, sewer, and support, these homes approved. Wake up, Apopka. This administration does not care about smart growth and its impact on citizens. This administration is more concerned with developers, as evidenced by the rubber stamp approvals, and the fact that the last time there was an increase in development fees was 2016. When a US congressman responded as to how many of his 700,000 constituents made up of the majority that supported his position on a pla, on his piece of legislation, he indicated he heard from a handful. Please speak up, show up, channel your efforts to this commission and our legislature. Your engagement is critical. Be that handful. I still have a minute, so I'm gonna encourage you to participate in the strategic plan. And I want to shout out to the fleet maintenance team, who within five minutes came to repair the tire on the police squad car that I was driving. Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners. Last year, we said we'd have a workshop to see what we could do to help reduce the risk of another steep increase in the water bill. And I looked for that workshop. I, I didn't see it. So, um, we let the residents down by not following through on that and pushed another increase on them. Find it kinda between a rock and a hard place here because, no, I don't live in the city, so I don't have to deal with the water bill. But I have church members that do. And they don't come here because they don't think they're gonna be heard. I kinda feel embarrassed about how the second rate increase has happened. Because there, there was no workshop. We didn't even, I don't know if we even attempted to have it, or was it just something nice to say last year so that we can get past last year, so we can get to this year? I, I don't know. Um, the second thing I wanted to say is that, uh, of course, I'm always here for uh, supporting the unhoused and the hu, and the needy in Apopka. I went through several things this week, um, with them, and it was about five or six of them that had heat-related illnesses this week because there was nowhere for them to cool at. And I think I must've took boatloads of water out there to help with the situation, but on the Orange County website, it says that the cooling station is there at the bike park, at the bike place. However, it's not available. And that's, um, because they need someone to monitor the location. It's not that they won't open it, it's just that they don't have anybody to monitor it. So I have signed up to volunteer to help monitor it, and I encourage those that can help, that can even do that on a, uh, on a day when it is, um, the, the heat is as high as it was. If they would please go there and sign up themselves to also help. And then the last thing is, um, this Sunday at 5:30, we will be providing dinner, clothing, and hygiene items, and some resources to, the, uh, uh, to our unhoused and needy guests. And it'll be just like Mama's, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
That it? Okay. All right.
If I may, there's a couple of topics that residents, I just wanna address that really quick, and I appreciate there's some new residents that came in today, so thank you for that, and thank you for expressing your concerns. They're definitely heard. Uh, the budgeting process was one that I, I showed a lot of concern as well, so it's definitely something that I'm not sure how we can, as a board, properly approve it with the way that it is and the way, the information that wasn't there, and I've brought it up many times. Um, and especially on the utility cost increases, that's a big one for me as well. It's, I'm not immune to it either. And again, if we don't have the budget process in place to understand how we got to these numbers, how are we increasing it, and why are we increasing it, and what does next year look like as well? So I promise you, you're, thank you for being here, and your voice is not unheard. I'm hearing, I'm listening, and, and definitely notating and advocating appropriately. So thank you for being here.
Okay, we've got, uh, set of minutes from August 6th. Look for motion to approve the minutes of August 6th.
Does it all change on that?
So, the August 6th, I was actually looking for the minutes. And what we have for, um, the public comment were just names. And, um, I, I did discuss this with Susan. I know that we approved the resolution, but I don't think we, either I misunderstood, but I know that I didn't agree with just list the names. There were some residents on that list that made some comments that was important, but it's not listed here. Remember, I remember one of the, and I'm gonna point to, and I believe it was Rod Olson, who had said just a small blurb. So, I mean, Rod Olson had talked about the public comment. So next to his name, you could've put, he made a comment asking for a small, uh, sort of blurb about the different residents who came to public comment. Mr. Jack Douglas made a comment that was important regarding the city charter. So by listing all their names as coming up for public comment, doesn't say anything. And this, this document is, is filed. So when anybody looks at it, they see all these names, they say, well, what was, what was said?
Commissioner, we went by what was outlined in the resolution that was approved last meeting.
So I have the resolution. So kind of point to me that that was the only, that, that we literally agreed to that.
Uh, the items listed to be shown on the minutes are in that list on the resolution.
Again, show me where we said only names.
It says the names shall be listed to the public commenters.
Okay, the name is listed. Who provided a public comment? Minutes shall include detailed, minutes shall not include detailed discussions, debate, personal opinions, comments, attacks, disagreements, characterizations of discussion, or remarks of council members or the public. The meeting, the meeting minutes shall be written in a concise, neutral, and professional style, and provide an action summary in accordance with this resolution. That is what I understood, that it would just have a small written concise of, of, of a remark that was made that I feel that was important. Like, we just had all these public comments. So I just make one little note. Uh, Dr. Moya, he talked about goldblow, uh, crisis. Mr. Leroy Bell, environmental assessment. Oh, Jack Douglas, sit here, wait for that. Rod Olson about the strategic planning, just something that tells me why they came up to public comment. I know I agreed on this, but I didn't, I don't think I agreed that just their names would be listed with no information.
Yeah, we went specifically what was provided in the resolution, and that was voted on last.
I know, you keep going back to that. But it says the format of the minutes. The meeting minutes shall be written in a concise, neutral, and professional style, and provide an action summary in accordance with this resolution.
Correct. The action summary is the motion that was made, who motioned, the second, and what the vote was. And Commissioner Velazquez, too, this is what I was debating against last time, that you had voted the affirmative for, and it specifically says minutes shall not include detailed discussions, debate, personal opinions, comments, attacks, disagreements, comments. It specifically says it's not gonna include comments, so when I was going through all of this,
Okay, so.
This is something that was so important.
Other than, uh, you know, I did agree to this, but I actually thought that there would be a small sentence to say at least what they, what they were saying. Whatever it is.
Why wasn't that brought up last, when, that meeting, though?
So comments, like, you know, because there was so much going on about that. And I, I do realize minutes shall not include detailed discussions, debate, personal opinions, attacks, disagreements, but just comments?
Yeah, and, and I think, uh, again, the, the policy was brought forth for voting was to try and, uh, provide professional, concise minutes reflecting the actions of the meeting. It's very hard for staff to summarize some of these comments, which is why it led to many discussions up at the dais.
But it's not, it was, it wasn't hard for me right now, just one word.
But, but ma'am.
Mr. Ian Kimball came up, it was about the water increase. That's all.
E- except that you're assuming that that commenter would agree with your summary, and that's the whole point of this, is to avoid that. You said somebody spoke about environmental issues. What if they come up and said, "That's not what I talked about. That's what we're trying to avoid, and that's why Ms. Bone proposed the policy." And so that's the issue. Who gets to decide, when someone speaks for three minutes, of the three minutes, what words summarize the comments? That's the whole issue. That's it.
I did a whole presentation on this exact issue of that there was words being changed, or maybe reflected in a way that the speaker didn't prefer. And that was the problem, is that we were running into those issues time after time after time. For years, I've been advocating for this, to, to be it properly recorded, if we're gonna record it. And then, again, I was the only one that voted against this because it didn't provide detail of what our residents are speaking about. And this is an official record, so.
I was.
They should've been brought up when we voted on this.
I understand about the detail. It is a lot. But here I had Dr. O who came up, loss of canopy trees. Uh, Mr. Ian Kimball came about the water, uh, inc, about the water increase. Kelly Park interchange, eminent domain. I mean, those are things that I feel, just little blurbs would at least you know what they were talking about. But to list all their names and have nothing else.
But that's what you voted for.
I did, because I didn't, and I will say this then, I did not realize that comments.
Wouldn't be reflected at all.
Yeah. So, to, can I at least, I'm, I'm.
It's your policy, so if.
It is my policy, but right now I feel like I'm being told, this is it, you voted for it. Now, I voted for it because I believe that we were trying to get away from a very detail
Right.
because we were with the city, uh, clerk. It takes a lot for her to kind of write and summarize. But we wanted to be able to at least have a one-liner to express whatever, at least. The, thank you, the subject matter that was being addressed. That's it.
And, and all I'm saying is, if you want to reopen the matter, any one of you could make a motion to reopen the matter and revise the policy, or make a motion to ask that the uh, clerk go back and revise the policy in accordance with whatever y'all agreed to, and see where it goes. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying you did or didn't vote on it, or, I don't, that's not what I'm saying.
So the only thing I would like to remove from here is comments. Because I feel that the city clerk has been with us for a very long time. She's been sitting here. She can highlight what the public speaker is saying. But to completely eliminate and just give us a list of, of those who came up for, doesn't say anything to me.
So, too.
So, yes, I would just like to remove the word comments from that. So do I have to make a motion for that?
Before.
Yeah, yes. It's because, because it's something you all voted on.
So in, so full transparency, I'm looking back at the presentation. Attached to is action minutes for example for City of Orlando, and also example for Orange County. It's exactly how the new minutes that we agreed upon to be recorded. It's, it's just these names. And the example shows the names, and it was attached to the presentation. Because I want to look back to myself to actually see again, just.
And what you're asking is exactly what we were, I was advocating for last time, is to make sure that it was properly heard when the resident spoke, that it was properly recorded in the minutes. Is exactly what I was advocating for, and that previous minutes
I wasn't finished.
didn't properly reflect that either. So that's the issue.
I wasn't finished speaking. So in addition to that, I think the issue is, once again, if her interpretation of what was said, we're gonna be back to the same issue again. It's her interpretation. If, if you don't agree with her interpretation, it's just, how do we get away from this, this, this circle of not saying that she's been, she's not been, I mean, she's been accused of not being honest, you know, not recording what citizens are saying, because it's her interpretation. So we can never have a clear, I mean, I don't know how we can have a policy to tell how to interpret a public comment, where we're all gonna agree upon it, because we all can hear the same sentence and have a different interpretation of what the residents said. So what is something that where Susan, our clerk, is not being called?
Well, I think that issue was from the very beginning that, um, some of the residents wanted a more detailed, presentation of the minutes, which I believe didn't need to be done. We didn't need to include the, uh, personal opinions, or the attacks, or the disagreements, or the characterizations of the discussion, or remarks toward individual, uh, council members. But when you have someone that comes up, as I remember from the last council meeting, which was, and I keep going back to, uh, Mr. Jack Douglas, he was, he came specifically for the city charter. So she could've wrote, the city clerk, or the staff could've written, Jack Douglas, you know, public comment, uh, city charter, uh, inquiry. I mean, those three little words would not have made a big deal that. I mean, those three little words would not have made a big deal that Mister Jack Douglas would come and say, well, I didn't say that, I said so and so and so, when all he did was ask about the city charter, when it was going to be put on the, on the council board. I don't even remember what Miss Valerie Sparkman spoke about.
Well, the meetings are recorded.
And they're on YouTube.
Recorded, you got YouTube, I mean, we're right back, we're going right back to where we were.
So why don't we provide, i- if, to kind of meet in the middle a little bit here, is that you, if a resident wants their a, 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 a summation, they provide it right before they speak. They say, I will be speaking about this, this, and this, and this is what I want in a minute. Though, that one sentence, that top line sentence that says, I'm speaking about the city charter, utility rates, and, and overdevelopment. And then they go into their comment, but that's what's recorded in the minutes. Their name and then that top line that is their own summation where nobody's making their summation.
I still think that we have to protect the integrity of these minutes. And we have attached a copy of the example of City of Orlando, example of Orange County.
They gave us that as examples, um, and I, I appreciate that we had those as examples. Um, there was a lot of discussion with it, I hate to bring it back up. But I'm just concerned that the list, to provide just a list of those who came up for public comment with nothing attached to them um, doesn't, doesn't make any sense.
Well, you were in the affirmative when you voted on this, so you do have the power to re-motion this and bring it back up if that's what you so choose to do.
Well, I would ask them to make a motion to have the city clerk review this. My only, I'm not dis- dispelling any of the why we did this, I'm just the comments, that's all. Just a little blurb about why that
It, it, it's a motion to them, not me. If you make a motion, somebody seconds it, then it's on the floor for discussion and you go from there.
Alright, so that's what I'm gonna do, make a motion for discussion, because I'd like the city clerk to review this again. And it's just for, just for comments.
For discuss, can you clarify your motion?
Alright, I know he gets, I know you kept very short with me, but the truth is it's just, I'm not, I'm not gonna prove the minutes as is, because I don't feel that the list provides or the minutes provides at least some information about why they came up here. So, so can I make the motion just to have the city clerk review it?
The, the issue before you, look, before we get too wrapped around the axle is approval of minutes that according to everybody who's spoken is exactly what the policy is. That's, so these minutes comply with the policy that you pa- you passed four to one, so these minutes based on anything I've heard, should not be a point of discussion. But what could be a point of discussion, because you voted in favor, you, you could move to reconsider the adoption of the policy and ask if you could see if anyone will second that, and then try to come up with a, a different version of the policy, if that's what you choose to do, but right now what's on, on the table is approval of the minutes in front of you, not the policy.
But we can table the minutes until you get, we get a policy that makes sense. We don't have to.
You, you could, but it wouldn't change the minutes that are in front of you.
We don't have to approve them tonight.
No, that's true.
But, but if we don't approve the minutes tonight, doesn't mean that we're gonna go back and change the minutes because they admit the policy, is that correct?
That's correct, that's what I'm saying.
So I, I mean, I don't wanna table them because I can't change them right now, but going forward, I'd like to.
Right, that's the policy.
Public comments, I mean, I have one little liners, I mean, it's too late to change these. But I don't wanna keep having minutes with just a list of.
Right, that's where you would reintroduce the discussion of the policy.
And we don't follow Robert's rules of order here, correct?
No, we do not.
Okay, so I would like to motion that we reconsider the minute-making policy to update what's taken and specific to public comment.
I, I think we need to approve the minutes first, before we.
There's a motion on the table, there's a motion on the table. We don't have an order. I've been asking for one for years.
I have no choice, but he'll move forward, I'm not gonna vote for these minutes, so I'm just gonna.
We need a second for my motion.
Okay, second for what? For your motion?
To uh, relook at the minute-making policy to adjust for the comments that the public makes and how we record that.
Okay, I'm gonna second that, because that's the issue.
That's the second, Mr. Velazquez, all is in favor.
Oh, it's gonna be three to two, I can hear.
Correct, it's okay to stand alone when we're doing the right thing.
So, got, what was your, what was your vote, Commissioner?
I'm gonna say, I, I second, and I said I.
Okay, so all those opposed?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, three to two, okay, back to the minutes, look for a motion to approve the minutes as read.
I need to make one adjustment to these uh, minutes. It's on page. Start looking for it. Going back to it, sorry, I'm switching back and forth. It was specific to the when we went over the transfer of Bulmon Gem, so this is action number one. It specifically states that Commissioner Smith asked for a motion to not accept, and I think it's what say Mayor Nelson asked for a motion not to accept, and I think Commissioner Smith motioned it, and it was seconded by Commissioner Anderson, if I remember correctly.
So, let me see what we're.
On page three of that. Where it should say, Mayor Nelson asked for a motion, and it says Commissioner Smith asked for a motion. Just a small adjustment to accurately reflect the minutes.
Okay, with those changes to the minutes, look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all is in favor. So we got three to two with Smith, Anderson and Nelson in affirmative, and Velazquez and Nesta in opposition. Okay, we got eight consent agenda items. Uh, would anybody like to pull those either from the dais or from the public? If not, look for a motion to approve the eight consent agenda items.
No, the only, uh, Mister Williams, the one thing that I asked for, which not expecting tonight, but just on the dispersal report, there was a we discussed this, a pool leak test for Camp Levalle, and I just wanted to make sure that we discuss that at some point, or if I can get the results of that, just to understand what that looks like moving forward.
Correct, I'm pulling those results and I'll share them with the council.
Perfect, thank you. So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries. Alright, public hearing, ordinance resolutions, ordinance number three thousand seventy-two.
Ordinance number three thousand seventy-two, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, submitting to the electors of Apopka, proposed amendments to the city charter of the City of Apopka, providing ballot titles, summaries and text for the proposed charter amendments. Providing directions to the city clerk, providing for severability, providing for an effective date for approved amendments, providing for an effective date of the ordinance.
Alright, council, we are on the second and what should be the final reading of the charter amendment uh, ordinance, so that we can get it on the ballot. The uh, questions I'm going to ask you essentially one final time uh, to approve, we could say you just wanna vote on the ordinance, but because each of these questions is significant, and I wanna make sure you've had the opportunity to consider them, so I don't just randomly throw out an ordinance and you didn't say you had a chance to vote on each one or consider each one. We'll go back through those questions again. I would remind you, they've all been through the first go-round of, of readings, but, but it's probably still a good idea to do this, and so we're going to. Uh, question one is changing from mayor council to council manager form of government. Um, the explanation is, this charter amendment would change the form of the government from the current mayor council, or otherwise known as strong mayor, uh, to the council manager form of government, and would become effective once uh, uh, one hundred and twenty days after passage to allow for the hiring of a manager and tradition, transition to this form of government. The actual question is proposed, or the proposal is proposed as changing from mayor council to council manager form of government, allowing a hundred and twenty days for transition. The reason for the shortness of the question is you're only allowed to put in a, a ballot uh, question of seventy-five words or less. The summary has gotta be seventy-five words or less, the, the title has to be fifteen words or less, and then it has to be followed by the blanks that you see here, yes or no, so that's gonna be true for all of these. If someone says, well, why didn't you have more explanations? Because the law does not allow a bigger explanation. But that's the first one, so does anybody wish to discuss leaving it or taking it off, or do we proceed to the next question?
Why don't we, I'm trying to think, we won't go through all of them and then, and then open up for public comment.
That's fine, I can do that.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, question number two is changing the name of the governing body from council to commission. Explanation, this charter amendment changes the name of the city's governing body from city council to city commission, and the official designation of council member to commissioner. The proposal language is amending the name of the governing body from the city council to the city commission, as you will call, when we did this, the charter says it both ways, and this would provide consistency throughout the charter to one, one address, which is commissioner, if it's, if it's approved. Uh, question number three, the charter amendment would clarify the authority of the city clerk. Excuse me, I should have done that, uh, the, the, uh, clarifying that the city clerk performs a ministerial function in reviewing candidate qualifying papers. The explanation is that it would show that the city clerk is not an investigative body, not a decision-making person, but unrelated, this amendment y'all internally said that it would be the policy going forward. If a question came up about a candidacy or legitimacy of candidacy, she would bring it to your attention as an internal policy matter, not a part of the charter amendment, so that's question number three. Question four, scheduled city elections. Uh, obviously, you recall that our current charter reads that elections are held on the first Tuesday in December, which nobody does. Uh, and so we're gonna try to make the, the uh, language in the charter consistent with what we currently do, and that would be to move it to the second Tuesday in March. The ballot title would be changing the date for regular city elections to the first Tuesday in March. Question five is term limits, uh, this charter amendment would establish.
Tuesday in March or the second Tuesday in March?
It's the second Tuesday, is what, isn't that what it said? Let me go back.
Says first Tuesday.
Okay, that's a mistake.
As the proposal doesn't.
Yeah, it, it, it apparently didn't get changed here, but yes, it is supposed to be the second Tuesday. Uh, no, it is, the second Tuesday in March, but it's the first Tuesday in December is how it reads in the current charter. You follow me?
Yeah, but you have.
Oh, I see that, it's, 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 it's not in the, in the, in this, in the title, I see that, that's, that's the, okay, that's a correction, sure. That should they say second Tuesday in March. Okay, alright, so question number five, term limits. This charter amendment would establish term limits for all city commissioners and for the mayor of no more than two consecutive terms, and prohibiting a term-limited official from holding the same elected office, commissioner or mayor in the city again for a minimum of four years from the date they last served. The, the uh, title would be creating term limits for elected officials and establishing minimum period of ineligibility uh, after term limits, so that's question five. Question six regards employment contracts. This charter amendment establishes that all city employees are at-will, employees subject only to any applicable collective bargaining agreement or an employment contract approved by a majority vote of the city commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. The title would be establishing at-will status of employees, limiting employment contracts to those approved by commission. And last, this question number seven, uh, city clerk and city attorney. This charter amendment establishes that the city clerk and the city attorney shall be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the city commission. The ballot title is establishing that the city clerk and city attorney are appointed by the city commission. And this would change, obviously, from the appointments which currently exist by the mayor and then approval by council, so that's amendment seven. So, oh, excuse me, there's eight, I forgot, we had a, a later add-on. Uh, at public comment was part eight. Uh, the charter, this charter amendment established that there shall be a public comment period before decision items on a meeting agenda are considered by the city commission. The title would be establishing a public comment period before meeting decision items are considered by the city commission. And that's all of that. Um, so the question is, what do you want to do? Are we good with these? Obviously, you can open for public comment and then come back to me and let me know, but we just need to know what is gonna finally be approved, so Ms. Bone can get it to the supervisor of elections and get us on a scheduled election.
Okay, any questions for Cliff?
Just a couple here, the, when was the first reading of these, do you remember?
That I don't remember, maybe you postponed those, I don't.
Do you happen to know that off the top of your head? Say that again? April fifteenth.
That was the first reading.
And was there any specific reason for the delay of bringing this back for a second reading?
I don't know.
Okay, so that was a mayor decision?
Council's decision, but.
Oh, so we have decisions of what goes on the agenda now?
Anyone could have made a motion to bring it back earlier, like Commissioner Smith did.
It should have been brought up, immediate, just like everything, it, it should be brought back up, so this caused delays again, so political delays. Uh, attorney, the impact on the election, so this will be March tenth. When do the, so the impacts take place of whatever may be approved a hundred and twenty days thereafter?
No, the only one that, that has a delay is the change to a council manager form of government, because if that's what the voters pass, then you have to have a manager hired. I mean, it could be that it, it is somebody we already have by that time, but, but I can't know that. And since I can't know that, I've allowed a time period for it passes, you start trying to look for candidates, interview, and then make a selection and hire that person, and that person gets trained essentially by the then mayor, who, whomever that might be, to do the job of city uh, manager.
So that would come in, should it be approved by the electorate, this would come into play a hundred and twenty days after March tenth?
They would, yes, that's when the mayor would no longer be a strong mayor under the form of government, and the manager would be the one who makes most of the major decisions, subject to review on certain decisions by the council.
Okay, understood, and then everything else would be as of that day?
Uh, everything else would be as of, of the time they pass, correct?
Okay, so that's the only one that has kind of a.
That's the only one that has a, a lead time because of the need to hire somebody to do the job.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Um, my, my question is, uh, question number five in reference to term limits. Uh, it said that the person would not be eligible to hold an office for a period of four years for either commissioner or mayor, so does that mean that if a commissioner turned out, we have to wait four years before they can run for mayor?
No, we, that, that was clarified, it's, it's for two consec- uh, consecutive offices for the same elected office. So a commissioner couldn't be commissioner again, but could be a mayor, a mayor couldn't be a mayor again, but could be a commissioner. And that was, we didn't have it that way initially, this is one of the ways y'all wanted to change.
Any questions on this end? Okay, alright, public comment.
Uh, Jack Douglas, twenty-one forty-nine Eagle Fresh Drive. I'm sure glad we finally got this to the second reading. Um, and I appreciate those that uh, that pushed for it to get on to the second reading. Uh, and I know that, that the staff is recommending uh, that this be placed on the March um, election. Uh, but I'd really like to see this in the September fourth uh, special election. Uh, the council has budgeted for it to be on a special election. Uh, I know that there's three people that have already said that they'd like to run for election, for the mayor slot. Uh, it would be ashamed that they would spend all that money running for the position and not know whether they're running for a full-time position or whether they're running for a ceremonial position. I don't know how much it costs to run for a mayor slot, but I imagine it's probably about seventy or eighty thousand dollars. Times three, that's a lot of money. Uh, there may be even some of the positions up here that are not the mayor that might wanna run for a ceremonial position, seeing as that y'all may have professional careers and you might be able to run for the ceremony position and feel like that you can make a difference to our city. But you're not gonna have that ability because you don't know which. But you're not going to have that ability because you don't know what you're running for. And I just think it's important that those, at least those three people know ahead of time what they're running for. And I think the citizens should know that as well. Who are they, who are they going to be voting for come March? Whether they're, they're going to be voting for it full-time there or whether it's going to be a ceremonial there. I ask you to consider that tonight when you vote on this, that you should vote to have that special election in September. The money's there. Let's get on with this. Thank you very much.
Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. I'm trying to maintain my decor. Because, you know, the last display we just had about public comment, and now we're looking at the charter and these things, I brought it up before. When we have a member of this diocese that's lying to the public, I won't say misinformation, that's straight up telling a lie, that's straight up abusing their power, there should be a procedure that every citizen know how to make that change. That needs to be in the charter, needs to be very clear. Because you're here to represent us, the people. And so when you go out and tell a lie, when you go out and do something that's corrupt, the people need to know how to get rid of you. They need to know that. That's how we stop corruption. But just as well as you do with public comment, you're doing the same thing here. You come up with this. I can't understand how intelligent people can look at some abnormal and know it's abnormal and then try to do an intelligent discussion, discussion on it. It just really pulls my hair. And I listened to the city administrator just saying, well, I don't see nothing wrong with the names, just, just having names there instead of public comment. Now, I'm not going to insult his intelligence, but he would never be a city administrator under me or any other mayor who look at integrity. Because if he don't have the good gracious to see that that's wrong, to see that there should be something there, even if it's just a few words. And then look at his response. When things like this happen, we need to know how to get rid of that individual that's not serving the people. And it's clear who he's serving. And for the citizens, you got to come in, show up and show out. Use your voice. You all have been brainwashed that you don't have any power. And that's the farthest thing from the truth. You have power. Make the motion. Be clear about it. Don't be walking both sides. Be clear about it. So in this charter, number nine, we need to have something, how we can get rid of corrupt official. That needs to be in the charter for the people to decide and people concede. Thank you.
Public comment three six zero three Golden Gem Road. We do have a mechanism to get rid of officials who abuse their power. It's called a recall. However, there are problems with recalls. And the problem I see with a recall is a recall can only occur once a candidate has been in an elected, elected position for a period of time. And there we have a problem. Because during that period of time, can we change everything that they voted on? Probably not. Probably a sheriff or a judge would say they were elected and we would have a lot of difficulty changing decisions that they made, the votes that they took. Even if we believe the votes were inconsistent with, with what we believe in, I doubt we could change it. The problem occurred two, a year and a half ago. And commissioners, you are responsible because it was brought to your attention at the time that we had reservations about what happened. But none of you, and I say that again, none of you had the appetite to do anything about it. When I wanted to do something about it, I was told that I would have to take legal action in order to do something about it. I'm just an ordinary citizen. I don't have bottomless pockets. I don't know the law. But what I do know is Attorney Shepherd sued some public, I think it was Satellite Beach, when they took action against a, a, a city. So it doesn't fill us with confidence knowing that we've got to do your jobs. Now, as far as Mr. Douglas is concerned, I wholeheartedly concur with him and what he said. We really need this decision to go into the September election, not, not next year. Why? Because I would have to ask our mayor, if he was only going to be a ceremonial mayor, would he even stand for the position? And that question will affect how I would vote for other candidates. So please, let's cut out all the delays that we've had. These delays were deliberate. We know perfectly well it was a game. The same as now public comment has been reinstated at the beginning of the meetings. It's a game. It's a game because it's on the charter and you weren't going to have a choice with it anyway. So let's cut the crap. Let's get down to business and do what we need to do.
Leroy Bell. You know, I found, I find it real funny that with the charter amendment that coming on, it's, it seems to be on this diocese, it seemed to be more important to the ones that sitting on the diocese, what are their chances, the good chances of how they can run again versus how that they should respond to the citizens. Back to the public comments. We had one commissioner just said, it's just her interpretation of what somebody said. If I got up there and said something about the ESA, the environmental study assessment, what interpretation would that be for all files to get that same interpretation and put it in the comments?
We need to, we need to focus on the charter.
I'm focusing on the comments. That's what I'm doing. And, and, okay.
About the charter amendment.
This is about the charter amendment. You didn't say that to anybody else, did you? Did you? Corruption, this what it's all about. This is about control because you got everybody believing that they supposed to work together up there. That ain't what the sunshine laws say. Everybody up there is supposed to work for the citizens. But everybody up there, three seem to want to work for you. And that's the only thing that you want to happen here. But what I want to happen in here is this, the strong mayor, we don't need one. You have one commissioner say, oh, we got a strong mayor. If we had a strong mayor, we wouldn't have rates going out of, out of control. We wouldn't have flooded streets. We wouldn't have a bad infrastructure. The only thing that we got is bad representation. It seems to be that we can get stuff on the agenda about pay ranges other than what need to be put on the amendment for the, or the benefit of the citizens. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. And, and I pray, Commissioner Smith, I pray you ain't got to worry about next come March. To Mr. Douglas or point, I hope that you do it in September, so you and Smith be gone.
Yeah, I see it.
Now, we, you're, you've got your-
I'm sorry, I, I need to correct something I said. I said September.
Right.
I meant November. I know that you can't make the September.
Right.
I meant November.
I know. Anybody else? Public? Okay. All right. So now back to the amendments. We'll go, go through them one at a time.
So is there, I mean, is there a way, we definitely can't do September, correct? There's no way for us to get on that ballot?
No.
Okay. And then so the, the point that was made is bring it to November. Is that doable? Is that possible? Have we looked into that?
We haven't. We haven't checked. My personal reason for March is that you'll get, what everybody talks about is voter turnout. If all you've got people coming out for charter amendments, you're not going to have nearly the turnout that you would for mayor and, and two other commissioners running for office, you know, but-
You may be surprised. People are not happy with utility rate increase and things of that nature. They'll come out. And we've already budgeted for it as well, so-
We can spend the money. We absolutely can spend money.
We've already budgeted it.
It's still spending money. I'm believing in a March, but it's, it's the will of the council. But whatever y'all like to do.
We, we have two things that need to be decided then. Which ballot we're going to go for? And may, may I suggest that if the preference for the majority would be the November ballot, that it should be, since we cannot know tonight whether we can make the November ballot until Ms. Bone can check tomorrow, that you would make the motion in the alternative if available November, if not March, because that would be the next one. But the second thing is, what is, what are we going to put on it? Whichever date it is, is it going to be all of the eight questions or is it going to be some of the eight questions?
Yeah, we're going to go down the list, but I guess we can, I mean, whatever, whatever the, I guess let's go to the first one, which you just brought up, which is whether the date, December or November, December. I mean, the, the November date, I know that, that City of Orlando is odd year Novembers. I think, is that the only, I mean, there's nobody else, nobody else is in November on an odd year. So, you know, but it's, it's, it's the will of the council. But it's, how mu, what was the, what's the total cost? I mean, we're talking about spending money, you know, it's- Fourteen thousand. So it'd be, so it'd be fourteen thousand on top. We're still going to have to do the March election regardless. So it's another fourteen thousand. So we just, we've saved fourteen thousand by not, by waiting till March. But what, whatever the will of the council is, what would y'all like to do?
I'm, I'm moving that we have the city clerk to see if it's possible to have the election, the November election. And if not, then we use March as the alternate.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith to, to look at the, the November or whatever date that is. I guess with Mayor, City of Orlando. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Now let's go down the, the list of the questions and just see where we, we stand. So the first, the first question is changing from mayor council to council manager form of government. What would y'all like to do with that one?
Keep it on.
Keep it.
So we got a couple. All right. Anybody else? So we got three. So we, I guess let's, we probably just do them all then. Let's say, is there any, let me ask this, are there any of the other, what have we got? Eight?
It's eight total.
We have eight.
Eight. Any of the other eight that you would like to take off? Is everybody good with all eight of them? Anybody got a question about any of the other seven?
Then if not, then I move that we place all eight items on the ballot.
Okay. Either the November, if we can get it on November, if not, it would go into the March.
So that would be, the motion would be to approve on second reading ordinance number thirty seventy-two, is it?
Yep.
And that's the motion. So, because that's how it reads now, is all eight.
So we got a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, ordinance number three one ten, future land use amendment summit at Wolf Lake Ranch.
Ordinance number thirty one ten. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from mixed use to residential very low suburban for certain real property owned by Lutz David L. Life Estate, Lutz Mary L., Mary T. Life Estate, R E M., David M. Lutz, R E M., Michelle M. Gregory, Poncan Pines Nursery, Inc., generally located north of Poncan Road, west of Poncan Pines Road and Jason Dwelly Parkway, comprising of twenty-one point four three acres, more or less, providing perseverance, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three one one zero and hold it over for second reading. Amending the future land use designation from mixed use to residential very low suburban for the summit at Wolf Lake Ranch. The subject property is situated north of Poncan Road, west of Poncan Pines Road, and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway, approximately twenty-one point four acres in size. The applicant seeks to amend the future land use designation from mixed use, which permits up to fifteen dwelling units per acre, to residential very low suburban, which allows up to two dwelling units per acre. The proposed land use is intended to facilitate a future rezoning and residential development consistent with adjacent phases of the Wolf Lake Ranch community. Subject site is currently undeveloped and designated mixed use on the adopted future land use map. Property is located west of the existing Wolf Lake Ranch, phases one and two, and is anticipated to be developed as phase three of the community. The proposed residential very low suburban designation more appropriately reflects the context of surrounding low-density single-family neighborhoods and the vision for the western segment of Poncan Pines Road. With that said, the DRC recommends approval at its meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the change in future land use designation from mixed use to residential very low suburban. The recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three one one zero and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean?
I do have a quick question. Well, a couple of questions here. The current zoning is mixed use.
The current future land use designation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we know when that occurred, when that change occurred? It's just, it's a weird spot for mixed use with such kind of a higher density, especially north of Poncan, that this would, that that would have been approved.
Right. I couldn't find any record. All I found was the last time that we adopted our future, our comprehensive plan. And the map is really difficult to discern. So obviously proceeded all our time here, staff time here. So I'm not sure how it became a mixed use site, but it's inappropriate for that area.
Okay. And this, in the total units is forty?
Forty-two for this phase and it's because they are, it's, it's two dwelling units per acre. So that twenty-one, it's twenty-one acres in size.
Okay. Understood. And then they'll have, they'll do some road improvements in front of their property as well, presumably if needed?
Yes, sir. As, as required, they'll go through the regular development review process, yes.
And so it's kind of a downzoning, so to speak, as well. Less intense use.
It is.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jean?
So I'm going to recuse myself again from voting on this because I do represent clients that is in phase one and looking to purchase in phase two. So I'm going to recuse myself from this, for voting.
So be sure to fill out the, okay. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number thirty one ten at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With, with one extension by Commissioner Anderson. Next up, ordinance number three one one one.
Ordinance number three one one one. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from MUESGT, mixed use gateway east shore, to RSF one B, residential, single-family, large lot for certain real property owned by Lutz David L. Life Estate. for certain real property owned by Lutz David L. Life Estate, Lutz Mary T. Life Estate, R E M., David M. Lutz, R E M., Michelle M. Gregory, Poncan Pines, Pines Nursery, Inc., generally located north of Poncan Road, west of Poncan Pines Road and Jason Dwelly Parkway, comprising twenty-one point four three acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department, this is the rezoning companion of the preceding item, it's a request to accept the first reading of ordinance number three one 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 and hold it over for second reading. This changes the zoning designation from M U E S G T, mixed use to east shore gateway to R S F one B, residential, single-family, large lot for the summit at Wolf Lake Ranch. The applicant requests this rezoning to facilitate the development of the, a low-density detached family residential subdivision. The proposed development will consist of forty-two single-family lots, consistent with the character and density of the adjacent Wolf Lake Ranch, phases one and two. The rezoning request is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, R S F one B is compatible with the residential very low suburban future land use designation and the surrounding land use pattern. The site is envisioned as phase three of the Wolf Lake Ranch community, providing a seamless continuation of the development in this area. The DRC recommends approval. At its meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the change of zoning. Therefore, the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three one 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 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not opposed, public.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane, all this is only forty-two units, generates fifteen students. That's fifteen students on top of the four hundred that you are in process for Beluche Acres. We removed forty-four trailers from the Wolf Lake campus just this last year. With the addition of these two groups, you're looking at putting them back on again. They aren't as safe, they're more expensive to operate, thank you.
Sure. Again, I recuse myself from this vote as well.
Yep, yep, okay. Alright, anybody else? If not, we close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one one at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor? All opposed, with one extension by Commissioner Anderson, so four, four for it and one for extension. Okay, thank you. Alright, next up, ordinance number thirty-one fifteen.
Ordinance number thirty-one fifteen. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing a sunset date for Article five of Chapter sixty-six, the Apopka Code of Ordinances pertaining to local business taxes, providing for the automatic repeal of the requirement for local business tax receipts and all related provisions of the Apopka Code of Ordinances on October one, twenty twenty-five, providing for codification, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Alright, you wanna take it, take it from here?
Absolutely. Absolutely, Antranet Forbes Economic Development Director. So in reference to the local business tax, just to give a little bit of background, there was an ordinance number thirty-one fifteen that looked to repeal Chapter sixty-six, Article seven of the Code of, uh, Ordinances that pertain to local business tax, which was introduced at the July second, twenty twenty-five commission meeting. Um, it basically talked about that no BTRs or business tax receipts will be required for any businesses, professions, or occupations, with the intended sunset date being end of the fiscal year, which is September thirtieth. There was concerns expressed specifically by the incoming Economic Development Director about the ability to gather data on existing and new businesses for business retention, expansion, and recruitment purposes. And so from that, the commission's last council's direction was to continue the item till the first reading of August twentieth, in order to allow staff time to do further research. So during that research, there were several considerations, both pros and cons, I'll present to you now. Um, on the pro side, it is definitely an entrepreneur-friendly policy, because for our smaller entrepreneurs, you're talking your startups, which are, your, um, smaller businesses. This, although it may seem small, this fee can somewhat prove burdensome, financially burdensome to them if they are a startup. It also helps streamline the process, because it reduces the administrative workload and paperwork, as well as compliance that's associated with getting a BTR, particularly for home-based businesses. On the con side, uh, the potential loss of business data to showcase things such as the business type, the industry, the size, the contact information, that there could be an impact on programming simply because trying to identify these businesses may prove a hindrance without that data. And also benchmarking in terms of the number of businesses that are registered, the amount of employees that they have, in order to set how, how we are able to progress in our economic development activities based on that benchmark. Another consideration, I believe that was mentioned at the July second meeting, um, was data retrieval, um, through fire permits, however, that would exclude home-based businesses and therefore would not be considered a standalone option. However, after researching, staff has found that there are some in, alternative and complementary solutions to gather that data. So one of them, for example, is Orange County, Orange County still collects business tax receipts, and so all Apopka businesses would still be required to register through the county. And we are able, not only staff, but the public is able to obtain that listing at no cost, they have it available on their website, and I have tested it out. And it does provide the information that we need, including not just business name, but also the industry, the address, as well as the primary source of contact. Uh, through our partnership with the Orlando Economic Partnership, the O E P, which we are already a paid member, we're also able to get access to some of their paid subscriptions at no cost to us. And then, of course, there's also a, um, database called A to Z, anyone who has a library card, which of course is free, are able to obtain this demographic research, so for those small businesses looking to do marketing, for example, you get a plethora of data from that. Um, so these are just some examples of how we're able to, and by we, I mean me, obtain the information that eliminating the BTR will be able to do. I want to disclose that it will take a little additional time, because we now need to decipher through some of the information, but we do have access to it. And I just said that, so in conclusion, alternative data collection is possible, and that there are most, multiple sources that can satisfy our socioeconomic and demographic data needs for economic development purposes. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Antranet?
So I know that we spoke about that, uh, uh, sunsetting the BTR, and you're saying that you have access to all these other resources, but you're one person. So in reality, you're gonna need someone else to kind of do the research, because when we brought you on board was so that you could kind of help us develop our businesses here. And this obviously takes a lot of time, because we actually had a vendor with two staff members keeping up with the BTR. So, I mean, I'm willing to say, okay, sunset it, but I'm not expecting you to be able to do all the resources. Um, so how do we handle that?
Well, we're still trying to formulate what Mrs. Forbes' is, you know, her ultimate role is, and who, who's her support team, but I, I, you gotta.
I can't, so, as, so as I had previously mentioned to the commission, my, um, in levels of priority, it is our existing businesses first. We need to figure out where they are established, how we can help them, and then what resources that we can bring in to help them expand and grow. That is always my, always top priority.
You thought, that was specific to businesses already in place?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, who are businesses in place, what industries are they in, how many employees do they have? So the databases that I had mentioned, I am now able to contact those businesses in order to gain additional data, so that will be part of our, what's called a B R E program, our Business Retention Expansion Program.
Will you be using previous BTR data at all to help you in that endeavor?
So I'm still searching for what data we have in place. Fortunately, we're able to do one final, what I'll call drawdown of our existing database before this sunset, so that'll give me a good baseline.
Okay. So previously, previous to you being here, uh, and previous to our, our previous Economic Development Director as well, this was pushed very hard to have a BTR program, to hire a vendor, to have staff specifically working on it, so it's, it doesn't make sense why now it's being so pushed the opposite now. Whereas, uh, because I was advocating, saying, look, this is a cost to our businesses, and then at uncertain economic times, in order to now, so why the change now?
So my role is to do is at the will of the commission, so if the commission decides that if they would like to eliminate this program, then I will find a way to get the data that I need. But one of the things I know that you and I talked about is the, the economic trends of business, right? So a lot of businesses don't operate the way they did even four or five years ago, COVID taught us that we can work from anywhere. So your traditional business that is in a brick and mortar or warehouse, now they can operate out of comfort of their home and simply have a warehouse space that houses their products, that sort of thing. And so what's important for me is to now find out from our businesses, as they trend and they shift, how are we able to help them grow? How do we assist them? And it's not always financial. If it's a, 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 issue of accessibility, in order to find out if they're looking, now I'm trying to use acronyms, so if they're trying to do more business-to-business marketing, if they need help with finding employees, because that was a big issue for a very long time, people find qualified talent. If there's an issue with access to capital, and we need to serve as a liaison between a, uh, lending institution and the business, but I don't know what our businesses need yet before I can formulate a program. So first things first is, we, I need to start that, um, that contact with our businesses, so I can learn. Now, my intention is to wait after our, um, strategic planning, because I don't want to bombard our businesses with more surveying, if they're already, we're doing that portion of it. But thereafter, that starts the contact of, okay, hey, we are here, the city's here, we're here to help you, but we kind of need to know first who are and what you need.
And, and then I, I totally understand and get that, and one of the conversations we had early on, um, with your interview, as well as when you were here uh, in July, was BTRs, that was a huge tool for you to be successful. It also built efficiencies in your job and ability to get things done, so my concern is that we're taking a director-level position and having you do administrative level busy work, so to speak, when we have a system already in place that is gonna provide you with the tools to be successful, not for yourself, although it will help, but for our residents and our business owners. And so that's my concern, is that we're taking away a tool that you had said, this is so valuable to me, this, this does great things for me, so I don't understand why we would even consider this yet until, because you're still building foundational work in your department. So why would we start taking tools away from you until you are fully up and running, and then maybe a year, two years, three years from now, you say, hey, we don't need that one, that one, I'm good, I got a good handle on that one now? Not that you're not proficient, but let's give you all the tools now to make sure that you're successful, stay out of your way, let you do what you need to do, because you're the expert in it. So that's my concern with this comes down to, that although I appreciate that you are looking at alternatives to get the job done, we have a way that was pushed very hard on us two or three years ago by the administration, and now all of a sudden it wants to go away, and I'm very concerned that we hired you, and you said this is a component of what's gonna make you successful, and now we're gonna strip it away from you. So I don't see how we can make your department successful and take this away. Can we massage the program a little bit? Absolutely, I'm totally open to that, but taking this away completely, I think, is a disservice to you, our residents, and all of our business owners, and new business owners, so again, I appreciate your hard work on this, and I know you, you're still getting your feet wet with the City of Apopka, but I think you had said it best, that it's one of your biggest best tools to be able to know what vendors are, or what businesses are coming into our city. So I, I really think we need to keep this, again, maybe we massage it in some way, and if you have any ideas in that, let us know. But I think getting rid of it completely and sunsetting it, I think is a huge mistake for us.
If I recall, the conversation, we started talking about collecting this business tax receipt. It was presented to us that we were leaving money on the table. Not so much that it was a tool. And so I'm not sure how, or if, we even used this previously as a tool, other than to collect some additional funds. So that, that's, if, if there's a way to obtain the same information, uh, without taxing, uh, businesses, um, for money collection purposes, then I'm all for it.
Mr. Velazquez?
Well, I've, I've already expressed, my concern is that she has expressed that there are other resources in which she can obtain this information. But my concern is, I don't want her to be the one doing that administrative work, because we didn't hire her for that. Um, we hired you for the bigger picture, um, and you don't have the staff right now. And so, and, and I will kind of repeat what our Commissioner Nesta said, was that when we first interviewed you, you did say that the BTRs was a good resource tool for you. So I don't know what's changed.
Well, I think what she's, you know, Orange County, we've got access, she's got immediate access to Orange Counties, which is the same list of BTRs, you have to have, if you have a BTR, you have to have one for the county and then one for the city. Obviously, if you're only in the county, you only have to have a BTR for the county, so the county has all these same, should have all the same, um, businesses.
Correct, and it also includes home-based businesses as well, so I've already downloaded a, a subset, and I've been able to filter it out for Apopka-only businesses. So now, part of my data mining is figuring out our composition of businesses, so I'm looking, okay, how many are classified as manufacturing? How many are classified as I T? So that's the, the data mining piece that I'm doing. In reference to, um, leaving money on the table, I don't know, you sure kind of covered all the things, leaving money on the table. So Economic Development doesn't get any of that money, so for, you know, it wasn't really, um, revenue for us. For, for me, it was always about just the data. If you remove the fee but still require the BTR, my concern is that businesses will not participate, there's nothing that holds them accountable to do so. Um, but that being said, I will, it is at the will and the pleasure of the council, so if it's something you decide you want to continue, great, if not, I will find a way to get it done.
My concern is, again, we have two staff members and a vendor. Um, I realize that there are some fees involved, but there's, I mean, it keeps them busy all day long. And so if we always had access to Orange County, then why did we push for the vendor three years ago?
Well, the two, cost us, the staff members cost us, you know, that's probably, roughly, what would you say, at least, I mean, I'm not saying they don't have other duties, but one, at least one of the majority of their, their time is BTRs, but, but the two of them probably salary alone has got to be north of two hundred thousand, with, you know, with benefits. The two, two staff members?
Yeah, I'd have to pull the exact numbers, but.
But I'm not, you're not disputing that, but
It'd be under two there.
To have, to have the BTRs, uh, department, we, because we didn't have it before, we didn't have anyone. The, the vendors came on their own, and they would pay for the BTR, but then it was kind of introduced to us that we had to have this vendor, the vendor came, and we need to get, collect the, you know, we need to find all of our businesses in the city, and now all of a sudden, it's, we don't need it.
So can I say that?
Yeah, let me, let me go back to that, because, uh, you know, they were having a hard time finding people, they were having a hard time collecting the money that, that was owed us so far.
So it was, so the reason we went to the, to the outside contractors, because we weren't collecting near what the percentage of the small businesses and businesses in, in Apopka that we should have been, so it's like, so we, we hire a contractor to come in and help us, and, and, and obviously, he's, he's done a good job, but we're paying him a percentage. And, and so then, but the, the, when you step back and say, okay, what's the, the real goal of a BTR, if it's just to, to raise, you know, to, to get tax dollars, I'm not sure that's the reason why we want it, now, yeah, I, I was the one that, you know, pushed to get, we've had the BTRs forever, what I pushed for was, if we're gonna do it, let's, let's get, bring somebody in that can actually collect the money that, that, that we're owed. And, and he was doing a good job, so it's, it's nothing against, you know, the team, not, not only the employees have done a good job, but he's done a good job, but it's, it's the question is, okay, if all we're doing this for is to raise money, if we got the, the resources at the county or whatever level to get the same data, which is what, you know, Ms. Forbes needs to make, make her program work, then why, why are we spending all this money that's just basically? then why, why are we spending all this money that's just basically, we're just turning money? We're taking their, their whatever fifty, a hundred dollars and we're spending fifty to seventy-five dollars on overhead to get the money. It makes no sense. So let's, we've got the data there that we need to, 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 for, for Ms. Forbes to be successful. And, and without that, I, I think it's, it's, is her a selling tool? Hey, we don't have BTRs. Come onto Apopka. We're, we're, you know, we're business friendly. Come on, we're, we're here for you.
Well, I think it's clear and I think the point of having an economic development director and department already shows that we are business friendly and entrepreneur friendly. And not having a BTR with this data that is quickly available to our economic development director causes delays in getting resources to our new vendors or our new business owners in the area. When time is money, they need quick access to this. And if I have somebody, a director level position that's scrubbing data, that's going to cause so much more delays and we're just moving costs from one department to another effectively. And again, it's a one-person department. So that's, the concern is that we're moving funds around at this point. And there's fixed and variable costs built into the costs that come in. We're not paying the vendor that's doing the BTRs unless they bring in money. So it's not like we're just spending that fixed. It's only when they produce income, we do it. And again, it was stated multiple times, this is a valuable tool for this department to be successful. And when our, this department's successful, all of our residents are successful. So we don't, you've said it, there's, there's, you're still figuring out what to do with this next. Until we have a concrete plan, other than you're going to go through pages and pages and pages of data, I don't think that's a plan. And when are you going to have time to do everything else that your job is? It's, it, we're paying you a premium, well worth it, to do administrative level stuff. So again, let's massage the business tax receipt, maybe the cost, things of that nature. But again, this is about access to data quickly. Clean data, scrubbed data, that this department desperately needs and has said it multiple times. So either something's changed or we're doing something different that this department doesn't need.
The only thing I will say is that we've been doing this for three years, so we have an established businesses already that are in the city of Apopka. My only concern, I keep saying the same thing, we did not bring you on to kind of research, to use this as a re, to use other resources to make your department successful. If the mayor would at least guarantee that one of those staff members will be part of the, your department that will continue to access different resources, then that, that's, then I can see sunsetting this. Cause then we wouldn't need the vendor and we wouldn't need two staff employees. But to have an employee, one of the employees, because we already have established the businesses with the BTR program we have, but I, we did not hire you to actually go out and look for this. Okay. So that, that would be the only way that I can sunset this is is that you get a staff member to be responsible for the BTRs, finding the BTRs.
Well, I have to, we'll look at, I mean, budget's coming up next council meeting, so that's.
Which I mean, that we're just moving, again, we're just moving costs.
Staff member. We're just moving a staff member that's already assigned.
It's not assigned to her.
No, but it's assigned to the BTR, because I do know one staff member, that's all that one staff member does, the BTRs. Um, and the other staff member is really a supervisor and she does sort of the backup. And she does the DCR board and the, so that's the only way that I would even consider this. Because I, we did not hire you to do this administrative work. We have someone that's doing this already.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson? Good. Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Albert McCamay, three six two three, Golden Gem Road. I don't always have anything constructive to say about issues here. But what I try and bring to the commission is the fact that we need to go over what we've done. And if we've wasted time previously achieving something that we're now trying to destroy. You'll perhaps correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't actually pay on an ongoing basis for someone to bring in the BTRs. They do it and we pay a percentage on the first year that they bring in. After we bring in the BTRs, we don't pay again for it. So it's not something that we're going to continue to pay for, to pay for. Again, I may not be correct, but did we not have a lot of discussion recently whether or not code enforcement could collect BTRs? You know, how much time of the public, how much time of the administration is wasted? Because Peter doesn't know what Paul's doing. The left hand can't tell what the right hand's doing. We're thinking that the BTR only does one thing, but you know what? The BTR sets a standard. It means that people come in here, know that we have rules and regulations and we expect them to keep to those. If people aren't keen to pay their BTRs, then how certain am I going to be that they clean their kitchens? If you can't follow one rule, what makes you special to follow the rest of the rules?
Sylvester Hall, here again, I'm trying to, uh, apply common sense. Uh, because if anybody comes to these meetings, like most of the, the regulars here, you have proper content of the whole thing. When this first started, how the mayor was so gunghole with it. And then look at where he's at now. And I wish you can just go back and play the video before and after where we at now. But that's coming soon, Eric. Thank you. That's coming soon. Uh, just to give you a little heads up. But the thing is, when we're talking about growing this city, when we're talking about bringing business to the city, and how long did the other economic developer last? When this was something, if you can go back and roll the tape back, that our former Commissioner Beckham, there was his baby. This is what he campaigned for and then this is what he pushed. The mayor didn't want it and you can see that. If you got any contents, you've been, you can see that. So he done done everything in his power to disrupt it, make sure it don't function properly. Because when you guys voted on it, you voted for the economic development to have a staff to do things that she need to do. He or she needs to do, whatever that, whoever's the person that we selected. Now we sit up here and we go through all this little dog and pony show. And it's, it's, it's really sad to see for intelligent people. It's really sad to see for intelligent people. And if we going moving forward, putting our best foot for the community, for the city, for our small business, our small business, what's the problem? Even if we spoke like we did before, just say, hey, reduce the fees and keep the program running. What's the problem? Why is it such an issue? And the last city council meeting, before she left, she said, this is instrumental to her. And I'm thinking, what don't happen between there and now? Who whispered in her ear? So I say to the people, it's all about leadership, who you have leading. The things that we've seen it arguing about, I apologize to all y'all. Because it's like your kids, you shouldn't be arguing about this. Because we are adults, we know better. You shouldn't even have to come here and be entertained like this. It don't make any sense. So if we could, leave it in play, reduce the fees. Let her do her job, what she was hired to do for the city of Apopka. Let her do her job. And then maybe we can keep her around for three or four years. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have, um, pros and cons. The pros, I think it would be good for small businesses to be able, for us to save some money. My concern now, seeing the way the city's going, is that now you save us this money, now are you gonna be taxing us higher in another area for you to raise that money? I think it would be a good idea because, for example, I'm from Brooklyn. Brooklyn, all of Brooklyn, one county, Kings County. Apopka is not the same. Because if you move five minutes away, you can only have, need the county BTR. If you're at one address, you need both county and city. I think it might be fair enough that the existing businesses, like a new business for the first time, has to pay for the BTR, then y'all collect that data, have it in a database. So it's readily available for whatever you need to, but the existing business, because right now, the process is not working. Every year you go on since you guys made the change to apply for, to renew your BTR, you have to go through the same process as if you're brand new. That, that's really, i- it's a waste of administrative time from a business owner standpoint. So maybe just have the new businesses pay and then maybe either reduce the renewal or get rid of it, but only get rid of it if the taxpayers is not gonna have to come in now and fill in the gap for the money that's being lost from it. Thank you.
Ultimately, it's your guys' decision, but, um, it's just interesting how this came up so quickly and is being sunset to the point of just feel like it's more political driven. Because there again, we still know, in one instance, you say you guys need to raise the race on this, this end. Then you're gonna cut on this end. We ultimately know you're gonna go hide it somewhere else. So at least in this point, we kind of know what we up against. I don't know, last time you might have adjusted the fees, but at least you know what you're dealing with. But I think it's just gonna be somewhere hidden in some other costs or whatever the case may be. Then you go into the zoning aspect of it, you definitely don't know where the businesses are going and if they're operating illegally, what, what are they actually doing? Who's tracking them? What's the safety protocols? What particular businesses have come in and out? So it seems like you might put certain other businesses in risk. It could be a business that were office-related. And then you get someone, I guess, working on cars next door. Um, but there again, you just, what is the, the sense of, we talked about it in June or July, we want to sunset it in two months. And there again, some things need to be vetted, discussed, brought, this workshop. It just seemed like it comes up, whoever, somebody said, well, um, a member of the community said this and we just gonna jump on that. Okay, that might have been one person, but was it truly a majority? But I just think we're kind of just speedballing for whatever reason. But we need to sit down and discuss these things and get staff support and put together something that we can actually read. It's just basically, hey, we just gonna do this, we get some bullet points, um, pros and cons, but this stuff just, just doesn't make any sense. At the end of the day, if you just practically looking at, doesn't make any sense. And if it did, well, in that case rebate us our three years that we already paid, if, if you didn't need the money. So apparently you're not using the resource as you should. It's kind of how I see it. But you know, if she says she can do the job and she want to do administrative stuff, that is. But there again, I think you should give the opportunity, see if it wasn't being done right, doing it correctly, what results do you get? That's what you want to discover. What can you do better than you've been doing in the past? Because we all know it hasn't been working. So that's just my two cents. Thanks.
Anybody else? If not, close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one fifteen at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. Let's have a little more discussion here, because there was a lot of public comment there and I appreciate that. Mrs. Forbes, just some final dialogue here. So again, you're still foundationally working to build this department up. You had said multiple times in the past and, and said that you did a great job at in St. Cloud of building the BTR and how that was such a tool for you. Do you need this tool now?
Do I need the data? Absolutely. Can I do it without the way it's been done currently? I can still make it work without it. But I'll give you an example. So when I first started with St. Cloud, I needed to know exactly how many businesses do we have, the composition and what I've talked about before. So as the years progressed, I can then determine how mu- much the businesses have either increased or declined. That was a data point that I can use and say, look, we've grown X amount of businesses. I also extrapolated the home-based businesses as well. To say, look, during COVID, our home-based businesses are growing. So now we have to turn on our services to support them. And then as COVID started to decline, our home-based business registrations declined at the same time. So I was able to infer from that data, people are returning back to work and therefore they're not, um, renewing their, their BTR. So that's how I use that type of data. Now, with that being said, I can still use the data that I have. My primary source would be from Orange County, for example, to still, um, interpret that information. I also want to say that I was doing some other research and noticed that a lot of the cities are now moving towards eliminating the BTR. And I gotta be honest, when I first saw that, I was surprised myself. When I came here July second, I was like, really? They're getting rid of BTRs? And so when I reached out to some of the other cities, such as Claremont was one of them, uh, okay, now how does this function? How do you work? And so the consensus was basically, it was more of a perfunctory, um, task and that they were finding workarounds to get it done. From economic development, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you that a lot of my peers, um, focus more on the attraction piece. And so because they have their priorities on the attraction piece, they may not pay attention to certain data that I would for my, um, existing businesses. And that's why it's so paramount to me. That being said, I can find other tools to get what I need done. I hope that answers your question.
Yes is the answer. So, so yes, this is a tool that you need.
Yes, I do need the data.
So, and, and what I'm hearing too and from what you said there is that you were able to pivot quickly with the information you had. To be able to adjust with the changing markets and changing economic climate. Not having that data so readily available to you is going to cause delays. So this is something you need. And until your department gets up and running, you really start running this, what you're telling me is that you need it now as a, as a foundational tool until you're ready to get it going. I think Claremont, these other, Ms. Palazin may be getting rid of it, have had an economic development department for more than a year, more than two years. Well-established, well-running. So this is something you definitely need. It's what I'm hearing. So I think it's inappropriate to sunset it now. Again, maybe next year when, when, again, you're up and running, things are moving. You have the data you need, you know exactly where to get it, but you're not at that foundational level anymore, then let's have the conversation again. But I think right now is an inappropriate time to do it.
Miss, I have a question, Ms. Forbes. Is this something that you need?
The data? Yes.
Do, would you, do you recommend, what is your recommendation? What is it that you would like to see happen?
So the, I think there should be a level of comfort. So I'm listening not only to what this commission's saying, but also what our constituents are saying. So if our business owners are okay with continuing to pay a fee, you know, that has to be under consideration. Um, I think there could be a somewhat compromise in the middle that perhaps the fee is slightly lower to offer a, a certain financial, um, consideration to our business owners. But it still requires them to, um, to submit their, their applications and I can still get that data. So I think that might be a compromise, if that's something.
That's something we discussed previously as well last, um, the previous meeting that this came up is, let's reduce the fees then, but still get that data, retain that data for you until you're ready to say, I don't need it anymore.
Right. And again, I can only speak from economic development. So I, I can't speak on the administrative part of what that means as far as, you know, staffing and such.
But it's successful for your department. We need that. We need a badge.
Well, the whole point of this, either we get rid of it or we leave it where it is. I mean, I, I, to reduce the fees, now we're, now we're spending, spending the same amount of money, getting less revenue. I mean, it makes absolutely no sense. I, I don't, I'd rather you vote it, you know, leave it like it is than to, to reduce the fee and have the same amount of work on, on our, our side to collect less revenue. I mean, that, it makes no sense.
Right now, we probably should leave it how it is. That would give you time to kind of implement it with everything, you know, and just not throw that on you right now. So I do agree that I think we probably should just.
And, and the public comments pretty much, the same thing, that they were, uh, in favor of keeping it. Of, of course, for the same reason that three years ago, it was brought to us as a, it had to be done. And I don't know if our former, uh, economic director, each, if she even talked about it or said it was a tool for her. But I do remember that you did say, um, that the BTRs was a tool for you.
Yes. So I, I do want to thank you all for your support. Yes, so I I do want to thank you all for your support and making sure I have the information that I need. I'm also very thankful that the community is in consideration of me um putting my best foot forward and making sure that this program is successful. However, you decide.
Okay. Look for a certain direction.
So I I'm not in favor of sunsetting it.
Got a motion to deny the ordinance number thirty-one fifteen. Commissar Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor? All opposed? Aye, so four to one um in not to approve ordinance number thirty-one fifteen. Okay, next up, ordinance thirty-one twenty-four.
Thirty-one twenty-four. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, amending the shops at East Shore PD Plan Development Zoning District. For a certain real property generally located on the northeast corner of Okoya Pocca Road and Keen Road, comprising twenty-seven point nine nine acres more or less, and owned by Shops at East Shore LLC. Providing for directions to the Community Development Director Severability Conflicts and Infected Day.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department, this is a request to accept, excuse me, to accept the first reading of ordinance number three-one-two-four. The amendment to the Shops at East Shore Plan Development. The subject property is found the northeast corner of Okoya Pocca Road and West Keen Road, approximately twenty-eight acres in size. The current future land use designation is mixed use and has an existing PD zoning designation. The original PD or Plan Development Agreement for the Shops at East Shore was approved on November twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Planned for mixed-use development, including commercial and senior housing components. During the site development and subsequent engineering, it was determined that the stormwater needs of the project could be ma- could be met without use of Lot Six previously reserved for stormwater pond on the master plan, which is conceptual in nature. The developer now proposes to amend the PD to allow commercial development on that lot. Therefore, the applicant is requesting to convert Lot Six from a stormwater tract to a commercial out parcel with thou- with five thousand square feet of new commercial entitlements, add tire sales and services, and allow use within the PD boundaries as well. The DRC has no objection to the proposed change and recommends approval of the PD amendment. At its meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Shops at East Shore PD Amendment. Therefore, the recommended motion is to accept the first reading of ordinance number three-one-two-four and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Stop. Staff and app- applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Jean?
It's actually for Attorney Shepherd. This is quasi-judicial.
Uh yes, yes, it is.
So can you update us or re-educate us on what that means?
Sure. What it means is if you first, if you have any disclosures about ex parte communications, that would mean that you spoke to someone outside of these chambers, doesn't matter who, about this issue, you need to disclose who you spoke with and the topics of your conversation, the reason being, then either the applicant or members of the public can inquire as to what you learned, so they know whether they agree or disagree with what you learned, and they can address it if they think they need to from the podium. Uh the, after the disclosures are done by everybody, uh then you hear the evidence and determine, and the only thing you're determining is whether or not the applicant meets the criteria for the proposal. It would hear the amended PD or rezoning and their code criteria, that's why you have a staff report. The way this works is if your staff recommends approval, that is competent substantial evidence that supports going forward. You can trust this, I mean, you don't have to, but the trust, the 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 staff's position is seen by the courts as competent and substantial. If there are alternative evidence on this on an important point or an uh an element that has to be met by either a member of the the public who happens to have a degree in something that's relevant to this, like engineering, appraising, uh surveying, whatever it might be, uh you can choose to believe that person over the staff and decide to deny the rezoning. But you can't deny it because you don't like it. It has to be based on competent substantial evidence.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Jean?
So I just do wanna disclose, I did speak with uh the applicant, it was a while back, not specific to this exact matter, but about the development overall. And I guess so the, and I got this during my agenda review. We're having water issues throughout the city. Drainage, flooding, things of that nature. We're taking away a pond from this project and slightly increasing another one, correct?
I will defer that to the engineers in the room.
Uh good evening, Mayor and council members. My my name is Jonathan Yules with the Lowns Law Firm, two fifteen North Yola Drive, Orlando, three-two-eight oh one. Uh I'm serving as an applicant for this project, and uh also in attendance is our our project engineer, Jordan Draper with Kimley Horn and Catherine Smith, WMG, who's the master developer. So uh you you're right, the the request before you right now i- is to change the original designation of this out parcel for stormwater to an additional uh retail out parcel. And the basis for that request is that the plan you're seeing now, metaphorically speaking, is like a rough sketch. It was it was prepared at the beginning of the development review and approval process. This is the 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 plan that was put together to support the original PD uh re- rezoning from PD. It was originally mixed-use east shore gateway. And uh at that time, there wasn't uh final engineered plans. That happens later in the development approval process. After you all had approved the PD, it went through those additional review processes at the city and with the Water Management District that includes review and approval of environmental resource permit. As part of those processes, that then now occurred, that stormwater pond that's that's shown in the top right corner uh is a is is a dry pond. This project's in a closed basin, therefore it needs to meet the more rigorous criteria that the city and the Water Management District has for closed basins, which is needs to accommodate a hundred-year storm instead of the typical anywhere outside of closed basins, a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm effect. So it it's a it's a it's a o- a a more rigorous design. It can hold uh additional retention that that because it's in a closed system. When those and now, when it was complete and the analysis run by our engineer, um i- it was proven that that storm po- that out-parcelled pond was no longer needed to ho- to 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 hold all the stormwater that would be generated from the overall project. So as we went through the process, that rough sketch got additional detail. Construction site plan, instead of being one page, is tens of pages. It's thirty, you know, it could be upwards of twenty, thirty pages. That's where the the actual s- the engineering calculations are made. They're reviewed by staff, both at the city and the uh Water Management District to prove that that pond as designed can accommodate all that stormwater, and that's, we've been through that process, permits have been issued. It's under construction today.
Thank you for that. So and I don't know if we have what staff had sent of, there was kind of arrows. It was sent in a separate email, I think, but kind of arrows showing the change in the flow, basically, of how you're changing topography of this. So a lot of the project now is heading w- west, well, I'll say the pub- Publix area is kind of, well, actually, no. Publix is heading northeast now to the larger stormwater dry pond.
Yep.
And then the rest of it's heading west to, I can't get a la- lake right now, to the west.
Medicine Lake.
Yeah, Medicine Lake.
Why don't you come up and confirm that? We'll have uh Jordan come up and.
Jordan Draper with Kimley Horn, uh project engineer. So the the out parcels that you see on the the left side of the page, uh parcel two, parcel three, parcel four, when no, whenever those are developed, right now they're masqueraded, but when they are developed, they'll have a standalone treatment and attenuation system. So they'll have a pond system on that lot. They are not draining to the master pond. Whenever those those are developed, they will have to meet the same closed basin criteria and be reviewed by the city and the Water Management District.
Okay, understood. And then so that stormwater pond to the northeast, parcel five, will that in any capacity drain north into over one parcel? I guess there's a larger pond there as well on the north side.
Correct, I'm forgetting the name. Um but yet, there is a discharge to the north as the site in the existing condition did discharge to the north.
Okay.
But we have to evaluate the hundred-year condition, so uh the projects, you you're looking at the the pre-flow that was sent to that pond to the north, the lake, uh we have to match that. So we're holding back a lot of runoff that you normally wouldn't have to in a standard condition uh to prevent the possibility of that hundred-year event flooding that lake.
So you can't change what's already naturally kind of in, well, maybe not natural, but it's in place right now.
Correct, right.
Okay. Cause there there's some concerns, it's Lake Rutherford, it's to the north.
Yes.
Uh that's privately owned by an HOA, and they they have some concerns of water, uh runoff water, I guess, going into it. But if Saint John's is reviewing that and they're basically saying as long as it's not more than X, then that's appropriate.
Co- correct, we're we're reading all's current state and city criteria.
Okay. Okay, understood, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, let me ask, since since you were removing the pond in parcel six, and now you're gonna develop on that, where is that water going?
So that that drains to the the northeast corner, the master pond. So parcel six drains through parcel one, the multifamily piece, to the back pond.
To the back pond.
Correct.
So can I show you something? Cause I did get, I I guess Commissioner Nesta, they responded. Public Works, uh our director did respond to Commissioner Nick Nesta, and they sent sort of a a diagram of where the water was flowing. Can you just kind of look at this and tell me? So you're saying this pond here now?
Are we able to pull that up at all and put it?
Yeah, cause that was sent from uh our C I, see where they?
Well, this is the existing condition prior to the change.
Mister Williams or Miss Sanchez, are we able to put this up at all?
So now they redirecting the water.
Okay, I think it's gonna help tell the story a little bit. Yes.
Is it the same one, Aldean, that you sent us?
Okay.
Mayor, I'd have to go grab it from the office.
He would have to go to his.
I'd have to go grab it from the office.
Well, can I can I forward this email to somebody in the room that can pull it up on this computer? If we can do it just again so that people in the room and also people watching online can just see the change in topography and where these arrows are going. Mister Hippler, do you want me to forward it to you?
This is the first time we're seeing this graphic. We just reviewed it with 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 Vlad and it and confirmed that the the two illustrations with the arrows are accurate, but we can hopefully put those.
So it's consistent with what you understand then, or what what you're?
It it it's con- consistent with the approved plans for the project.
I wasn't aware that you guys hadn't seen that yet. So go wrong some page, but it is, but it is correct. Okay.
Well, yeah, I uh I'll give this a try. The the original conceptual drainage plan had the stormwater from parcel one and this out parcel flowing the same u- under the road and going to Medicine Lake. When it went through the subsequent development review processes where the final design is actually prepared by Jordan as the project engineer, submitted to the city and actually based on a lot more data that's collected from the site, including topography. Those two parcels are now draining the opposite direction into this stormwater pond that's currently under construction. That stormwater pond has been designed and permitted and being constructed to accept stormwater from both parcel one and the proposed parcel six in addition to the mi- uh retail, the retail anchor building uh inline retail and the medical office that is also under construction today.
So that stormwater pond's gonna sit lower than?
Wow, quite quite a quite a bit.
There's fifty feet of fall from Keen Road to the north.
Gotcha, okay.
So I think that's what the the two illustrations you're referring to in the in the packet that the city engineer has put together for you all. So we we can confirm that is accurate.
Okay, I just wanna show it for for everybody in the room and then also uh those watching online that they can see uh what we're talking about.
Are there, are there anybody from the neighborhood that, okay? If you'll, okay, we do, did you give us your email address? No, what I'm saying, did you give us your email address? I was gonna say, yeah, because we got, we had your, did you earlier when you when you gave under public comment, did you have your email address then? Okay, cause uh Susan, if you'll pull that one out and just be sure to send him the the uh the email, so I'll have our engineer talking about this project, I'll have them forward that that email to you.
Perfect, there it is. That's it?
That's perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah, so this this was the originally, the original design at at the conceptual rough sketch stage that served as the basis for the original PD plan that we're now into amend. Can I just hit the arrow? Or are you able to control it? How do I get to the sec- the next page on the? Okay. And I think just to illustrate the two we were working off of is here is the actually de- engineered design project, and that you could see that those arrows, both on on um parcel one and proposed parcel six are now directed and they're in red back to.
And this is the updated one, this is the newest?
This is the engineered plans.
Okay.
Reviewed, approved by both the city, Water Management District, currently under construction.
Okay, so those bottom left three will feed into eventually into the lake to the west, and then the rest will eventually uh lead into the lake to the north.
Uh to the.
Correct, to the northeast, yeah. Okay, okay, thank you.
To the storm, to the stormwater pond to the northeast, not this the.
But it slowly pertulates to that lake, correct?
Yes, but but it's designed, so it's it it.
Not more than what it is.
Not more than pre-development flow into that.
Okay, understand. I appreciate you, the patience and taking the time. Helpful for the residents to understand as well as everybody in the room, so uh thank you for that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Anybody from the public should speak.
Can I have my paper back? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
My name's Ian Kimble, uh Park Meadow Drive, Magnolia Park Estates. I live just the other side of the bridge where this is all being constructed. And I've had some concerns since day one of this project happening. Across the street here, there's an apartment complex, there's a path trail, and then a lake there. Uh and then you have Keen Road that goes up. That is a two-lane road that a lot of heavy traffic goes down that can never get out of that intersection, especially due to the fact that there's tractor trailers that are trying to make those turns, which is a highly dangerous intersection. Secondly, you can't really prevent or make more room here, because that's a two-lane road on Okoya Pocca Road which you have a very small turn lane going into El Hardin, the apartment complex across the street. My concern is is one, great big beautiful plaza, I'm really looking forward to having a Publix right across the street from me. However, the traffic is insane. Well, it used to take me three minutes to get from, say, Boy Scout Road to my house, is now taking me over fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, because one, there's one traffic light at the Okoya Pocca Road, four twenty-nine bridge, which you guys, I don't. there's one traffic light at the Okoye-Pocahontas Road four twenty-nine bridge, which you guys, I don't know yet, who approved the design on that. You put a bicycle trail that lines up in the middle of the road that people have to turn into. There's a turning train with traffic tray, tractor trailers who again have wide swing radiuses who have tail swing. Who now you have a vehicle trying to travel north on Okoye-Pocahontas Road that has to shift from the lane there in on the right to almost the middle of the road to go straight. Meanwhile, you have a pedestrian bicycle path that's going to connect to the park, which is phenomenal. Again, going right through my neighborhood. But again, severely safety issue. I want it on the record because somebody's going to die at that intersection, not once, not twice. Now the flooding that happens, and this is what I'm talking about with the water, when it rains, Okoye-Pocahontas Road floods like crazy. All the dirt comes across the road. It's a complete nightmare and a mess. So I don't know who's approving all this. I'm not a developer. I'm not a permitter, but this is an absolute nightmare which you guys are putting there. It's a great big plaza with two two-lane roads. I hope you guys have plans to make those roads wider because I've also learned that you can't widen a road until you do a census and the problem's already existing. So what's happening with planning for the problem before the problem arises? There needs to be some definitely looking at because that is a safety hazard with the flooding in the road. This dirt and all this stuff coming into the road, the rocks that are coming into the road, the tractor trailers, no red light, no pathway for travel. And yet you have this magnificent, big gigantic, beautiful plaza you're building there. And then you're going to put on parcel one, a bunch of multifamily units, which I'm probably going to say that's probably apartments if I had to take a guess. Um, and then you're going to take parcel, was it six that you guys moving the water from and you guys want to develop that also? It's ridiculous.
Albert McCamay, three, six, oh, three, Golden Gem Road. I'm confused, not by what the applicant has presented, but what the city constitutes as competent and substanti- substantive evidence. You know, I go back two years, maybe two and a half years when Jim Hitt was here. And I came up and asked the mayor, I have a simple question for you, mayor. And I said, you may or may not be able to answer it. But in essence, I knew what the mayor was going to say anyway. He was going to say to me, come back in two weeks. The problem was we continue to make decisions without competent and competent and substantive evidence. Why'd I say that? Well, when we go back to Mr. Hitt in those days, I believe he said the city paid eighty-six thousand dollars for a census of what the development was currently at that time in Apokka. It was to establish how much new projects there was, how many were already underway. There was a lot of information. And you know what? Last week I came into City Hall and I asked for a copy of your current documentation so that I could provide myself with competent and substanti- substantive evidence. And guess what? I can't. So I've got to ask you, how can you? If you don't know where this report was generated and you don't know what's on the report, why are you here today making decisions on our future when you're ignorant of plain facts? And that's a fact. This report was generated over a year ago, probably fourteen months ago. And there's no update for it. On this, what your competent and substantive evidence today is, is based on something that's over a year old. You've no idea how many houses are being built. You've got no idea how much runoff's going on. Admittedly, it's been looked at by the engineers on individual projects, but you as commissioners aren't being given up-to-date data. Why don't we have up-to-date data? It's not, it's not a difficult thing to take in all the data and if IT compile it into a spreadsheet that's up to date. This spreadsheet says we currently, it will just go at dwelling houses. We're at eight thousand nine hundred, but we know it's far more than that. It's probably fifteen, sixteen, seventeen thousand now. I don't know. Bannon doesn't know and you don't know. Competent and substantive evidence. Where is it? Why are we voting tonight if you don't have it?
I have lived in that community down there since nineteen seventy-two. Right off Keen Road, right the backside of Lake Jewel. We had vibrant lakes down there. We had the pasture. We had Lake Jewel. Then the dumps came in. Everything got choked out. All the water started going west down this road of Keen Road. Again, I asked, where is the ESA and the ES, uh, the EIS report? Showing possible contamination, showing exactly what they're saying. Show what they did to soil samples, showing where this water's going to run, not guessing. Just because the engineer said it goes this way, where are the reports? And especially when you put these single-family homes in there, where are the water going? If you go down to the end of Keen Road and to Apokka Court Road over to the left, they built some apartments. All that was orange grove. It was a lake over there at one time. They closed that lake off. All it takes is just a small amount of rain, the lake across Apokka Court Road is going to flood. We're going to have down there on that end, we're going to have the same thing that you have out here at this, uh, over on, uh, what that is, Peat Mark. The same thing you're having on Clear Lake. And this thing here say, uh, we got, uh, this is the first reading. I don't know why you're approving anything when you don't have all the data. Why are you coming to approve when you're already building? You're putting the cart ahead of the horse. Why don't you have all the data in the front of you? So when the developer come in, I just let you know unfair enrichment. Get ready, Apokka, because you're coming. You can build what you want on your property, but when it impedes on somebody else's property, not just one of you guys, not the engineer, you're the guys that are proving it. And each and every one of you can be sued. Just remember that.
Rod Olson, thirty-one, fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, this project's going to generate another eighty students. I'm not sure what schools they're going to go to. And so you know, I don't just pull these numbers out of a hat. Uh, this is based off the Orange County student generation rate. That's a public record. I've just emailed Lauren Roth to confirm the record I have. The last I had, I talked to her in the last six months was still from twenty-twenty. I will verify that. I'll send it to you again. You sit up here and approve one development after another. We're not looking at the aspect of the roofs. We're not looking at the aspect, all the concrete we're creating. Flooding is a gentleman, I think, two meetings ago had cited, uh, with it. The same thing is true with students and you know, I've talked to it before. In twenty years, there's only once Orange County public schools has said no to a development. That was Hammerick Estates. And you overruled it, still put them in there. We, our student overcrowding is a problem. Five of our fifteen schools in this city are over capacity. Those trailers are not as safe. They're more expensive to operate and heaven forbid something would happen on one of those campuses. Thank you.
My question is, is it possible? Okay. Uh, my question more in regards to the traffic issue because when I look at the site, um, it's very resemblance to, um, the Publix located on Welch and, uh, Roxman Grove. And I know previously, well, a couple of years back, we had to do like a pork chop here to make it right and right only. And then up here at this other angle, I mean, other entrance, you can kind of go both ways. I just wanted to know if there was any consideration on how that's going to impact the traffic on the road? As well as I know it was recently seventeen million dollar, I guess, grant or some money you guys received. How does that align with that particular plan in coordination with this? Um, because I know they put the, the blinders up, I guess, so you can't cross into that area. And I just didn't know if they was going to take, take account for that in the future.
Anybody else? Jonathan, you want to come up? Oh, we got one more.
Sylvester Hall, I only got a few, uh, only a couple of things. Uh, I won't repeat what everybody have came up here and said. They all make valid points that are paramount to this situation. But if you can go roll the camera back some couple of years ago, maybe so. I used to, I used to, simple question, do we have a consultant when it comes to all these building projects? Do we have a consultant that go out and do the legwork for you guys since you don't have the time or don't have to know how to do it? Because everything that the citizens are bringing up here now, that's something should have already been discussed and it's already should be thought of before we get to where we at now. So it's, 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 it's really, like I say, hair pulling that we can come up here and we can vote on something that we don't know the, the big picture. We don't know the whole contents of the situation. And then we say we doing our, we doing our best for the citizen. We doing our best for the city. Make it make sense to me. Everything that, that somebody that come up here and said is valid to the situation and to the developers. I want you to know that we love you coming here. Don't, don't think that is wrong. We don't, we don't want you to come. We want you to come because we want you to beautify the city. But if somebody just take the common sense thought process to see how everything's going to work out, including everything that was just said here, it's a very simple solution. When we all work together for one common cause, that's the city of Apokka. Everything just flows so smoothly. You get the minds together that no, it shouldn't be no guessing. When you get to this point where you got to vote, it shouldn't be no guessing. It shouldn't have been, oh, well, I think this is the right, all that should be fact. It should be fact moving forward. And that's how we complicate things when it's very, it's a very simple process. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Jonathan?
I just want to address a couple of points that were made, just maybe make some clarifications. A lot of information to share during public comment. Start with schools. This project was approved several years ago. It's a mixed-use project. It does have a residential component. However, that residential component is senior age restricted housing that was approved. So that will be required to have a restrictive covenant that will not allow, uh, students to reside there. It's going to be a fifty-five and plus community. So there will not be an impact from this project from schools. And part of the conversation that was had when this project was originally approved was that that senior age restricted housing component helps fill a void that is in the city for that type of housing. Uh, in terms of roads, uh, you might recall that this is a PD and PD is negotiated zoning. And there was a lot of negotiation that occurred with this project. Part of that negotiation was the road improvements that were going to be made by the developer in conjunction with its development. Those road improvements include a complete, um, um, modernization of the roads adjacent to this project, including on Keen and on, uh, Apokka, uh, Apokka Coey. And, and the signalization of that intersection. This developer will be building that signal. That signal will be up and, and operating uh, before the, the Publix retail anchor is open. That was an important discussion item when this pro- project was originally brought before you. And so what was being, what was, uh, uh, prior to development was a rural two-lane road segment that was probably sub, I, substandard in design, but at the intersection as well as being replaced by modern suburban road net, um, roads that will have act, uh, turn lanes, both in the left turn movement and the right turn movements. And, uh, a fully new intersection that's going to be signalized. So, um, and just to recap, you know, the approval today is the zoning change. Before this parcel six were to go through actual development, it would have to go through the review processes both at the city, including a development plan that would come back before you all, followed by engineered construction site plans that would have to be reviewed and approved by city staff and a modification to that what St. John's Water Management District permit to ensure that what's being built out there, um, has adequate drainage and capacity in, in that stormwater pond. So there are checks and balances beyond just tonight's, uh, decision before you. So with that, happy to answer any questions you, you might have.
Any final questions for Jonathan?
I, I just want to say thank you for sharing the information because in reference to the traffic light, because I, I was going to mention that as well. That, that isn't planned. There's some road, road improvements that's going to take place that this developer is providing to the city of Apokka to help alleviate some of that traffic.
Thank you. And so I, one question too, just to clarify as well, the timing of the road improvements that you're doing as well as the signal, they're not going to be waiting for our side of Claricono-Coe, uh, excuse me, Apokka-Coe, Coey-Pocahontas Road to be improved. You're not waiting for us at all in any capacity?
No, those, those, both of those rights of way are, are county rights of way and that those are being permitted through the county and being constructed by the developer. The developer is under an obligation with the city to have that signal in place prior to, uh, the Publix open.
Okay. And, and the roadway improvements as well?
Correct.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looking for a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one twenty-four, first reading and holdover for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor? All opposed. Motion carries on. Commissioner Velazquez, why don't you get started on council reports?
Yep. Well, the, I did attend one of the strategic planning, uh, sessions. I, I attended the first one. The only disappointment was that we didn't have, uh, much of a public input here in the chamber. And then, um, we only had like seventy-five, uh, responses, um, online. And then I learned that a lot of the data that they were presenting was from twenty-twenty. And so that was a little disappointing because they're not really using the most updated data. And I don't, I don't know if the strategic planning, uh, workshop is, uh, resulting in anything that would, um, kind of set us uh, for the future because we don't really have the input of a large uh, consti- uh, of our constituents. I mean, I hate to have a strategic plan put together with just seventy-five responses. And maybe, I don't know how many showed up for the second and third session, but the first one didn't even have ten.
Yeah, as I say, it was around the same.
Same thing?
Yeah, same number.
Yeah. So that's, um, I, I don't know how to make, uh, to have a greater effort from our public because, um, a strategic planning is setting us up for a future and, um, I don't know if seventy-five people or less than a hundred and fifty people are going to make it.
Rob, can you get some data on any like clicks on to maybe people did fill it out or didn't, um, complete the, the online survey? Can you get us any? Okay, just, we can just at least get you some, some, some raw data from, from their team. I, listen, I, I.
I know that it goes out with the water bill. I know it does. I, I, I checked my Apokka news.
Seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand newsletters. I mean, I, I only leave a horse to water.
Yes, um, I, I don't know how successful that strategic planning is coming along. That's the only thing I have to say. Um, I went away for the weekend, so, um, that's all I have. It was that my concern was the strategic planning and, um, I don't know if it's successful at this point. And when does it end? It ends September thirteenth. So by September thirteenth, uh, we'll have a, a number. And when are they coming to kind of give us an, an whole overview?
I don't know if we have a.
Uh, it'll still be a, a month or two after the data components finish. Uh, it'll still be a, a month or two after the data components finished. We'll do some um, internal planning sessions with them, with city staff. And then they'll put the package together and come present to council. So probably closer to the end of the year.
I'm just a little concerned that we're just going to have less than a hundred and fifty or less than two hundred um, an input from two hundred people for a city of almost sixty thousand. Okay.
Commissioner, nothing? Okay, Commissioner Nesta?
Yes. So just a consistent reminder of uh, my office hours. Every Thursday uh, here at City Hall from eleven AM to one PM. I uh, take thirty minute um, sessions. If you want to make an appointment, feel free. Otherwise, um, yeah, walk-ins are fine as well. And if you are uncomfortable for any reason, come into City Hall and meeting me on site here. I'm happy to meet you anywhere else, wherever you are comfortable. Um, I've done in the past and happy to continue to do that to meet residents where they're at. And office hours have been going really great, really good ideas coming from that. So always a proponent of that and um, happy to always continue to meet with residents, especially as we are working through budget and uh, utility rate increases. I've been getting a lot of uh, concerns and conversations about that. So please come speak to me, give me some feedback. And uh, let's get this city righted. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, I did also attend the uh, first strategic planning session as well. Uh, as Commissioner Velazquez said, uh, it was a low attendance. And uh, I know at that meeting, we discovered that the link that participants could go to to uh, do the survey did not work. And so they were supposed to go back and, and fix that uh, so that it would work. Uh, attended Florida League of Cities Conference uh, in Orlando as well. Uh, very informative session, a lot of great uh, workshops and breakout sessions as well. And uh, as my last comment, I would uh, like to uh, make the motion in reference to the uh, minutes policy. Um, I a- a- agree with Commissioner Velazquez in reference to just the names, but likewise, I don't want us to have our city clerk to put bullets next to the names. And then we come back and then we criticize her and attack her because she didn't put what we felt like should be there. If we're going to give her the leeway to summarize those comments, then we ought to be also willing to accept the summary that she gives us and not attack her because it doesn't say what we wanted to say. Um, so with that in mind, I would like to uh, make a motion that the uh, policy for the minutes be uh, reconsidered. And allow the city clerk to go back and make that addition in reference to the comments only.
That's what I was asking. So I'm going to second your motion on that.
And she'll bring it back to us to review?
Yes.
Okay.
And I thank you, Commissioner Smith, for reconsidering.
Okay, so you got a motion and a second?
Yeah, I know that. Um, I'm just trying to think how we oh, so you're looking for, so explain a little bit more, Commissioner Smith. I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what you're asking.
As Commissioner Velazquez said,
Okay.
um, demonstrated ju- just a, a brief, not even more than a sentence as to the comment that that particular public uh, comment made. Um, and, 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 and that's it. And you know, and then like I said, then we got to agree that we're not going to attack her if what she has summarized does not capture what we felt like it should have. Uh, otherwise, we're going to keep going back and forth through the same procedure that we've been going through before. And so I would just say in, in, in less than a sentence or less, that for each public comment.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. He- here's my only caveat. I, I, perfectly fine where we are right now, but I, I will give you that, that courtesy. With the only, here's my, my only ask is if we, if, if the first time it comes back and somebody says, that's not what I said, then it goes back to where we are. Are you okay with that?
Can I say this?
Sure.
I'm looking at the form. There is an item subject on here. So if the name and I guess the item subject, so that means they can, it could be exactly what they
Not?
They, they put what they wanted to talk about.
So maybe print it on that form?
The item subject.
Be on the form?
Cause it talks about what they, you know, what they want to discuss.
Less than?
And it's less than a sentence?
You want to see it?
Well, just don't like say a sentence because you know, that could be a ramp.
I'm just, I don't, I'm trying to figure out a way where it won't be a.
I just feel having the minutes, which is now a document that's going to be filed for future. And people are just going to see a list of names and they say, what was discussed? What were the comments? And so um, I know they keep saying you agreed to it. I agreed to the policy, but didn't realize, and I, when it said comments, I thought it meant comments that were derogatory. But a basic comment referencing an important subject or a concern should be documented.
So about ten, ten words that?
Doesn't matter for this, ten words, but that, the subject matter is understood.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Ten words or less and then?
I'm not going to go with ten words. A subject matter that is pertinent. That's it.
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to vote for that.
What you gave us, Commissioner, was less than ten words?
Yeah, yes.
Some, one of them was only three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I guess it's something she can follow, something she can follow.
But the point is just bring it back to the council. The whole point is just bring it back to the council.
Yes, okay.
So we got, so here, so let me, let me try to reconstitute the motion. The motion is to add, so, so public comment on your form, ten words or less. And if, if we get, we get back crossways again with the commissioner, then we go back to the way we are today. Is everybody okay with that?
What do you mean by that? Crosswords with the commissioner?
If, if we're, if you're going to then say that whatever Susan's done is not what was said, then, then?
No, I'm not going to go back to the, we either make an amendment where we're going to allow at least a brief summary, whether it's ten words, to be at least uh, posted on the minutes for the public comment. I'll go with that because at least I'm getting something back.
And if we do that, then we're not going to have that.
Right, exactly. That's my whole point.
I'm not, I've never attacked.
And nobody was attacking. It was correcting the minutes so that they were properly reflected and I, we all showed that there was discrepancies. So we can say there was attacks, but there was inconsistencies that we needed to fix.
Yeah, so.
So, ten words or less on the, on the form. Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
We have to be creative, ten words. But okay, it's better than nothing. So. But I'm not going back. I'm not, I don't want to say to go back. We'll do that and we'll work from there.
Some, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries on.
Are we going to do public comment on that?
No, we're, we're good.
Wow.
Okay, um.
And I thank you, Commissioner Smith.
You're welcome.
Okay. Cliff?
You don't want to hear what I got to say, but you, you can't make a decision on something without opening up a public comment. You have to do that.
Wow.
Okay, who wants to talk? Come on in.
Wow.
You know what this is about? This is about silence in the people. You don't want the people's voices to be heard in entirely. There's legal procedures, procedures that goes on here that we have to record exactly what was said. You have no problem in doing that. So why is it a problem when it comes to pu- public comment? You got a problem doing it. It's simple. You don't want the people to hear what the public is saying. Because mayor, when the public come up here, public comments, and these individuals bring excellent thing to help move the city forward, you look at them in disgrace. Just like you looking at this nigger sitting in front of you. You look at it in disgrace. There are certain people that come up here, you have dialogue with, and if they bring something to your attention, yes, you sit there and you have dialogue with them. But the ones that you don't care for, they can tell you, mayor, you got a hundred thousand dollars waiting in the bank for you. You won't even listen to it. So when I say it's time to, for us to do away with hate, do away with corruption and do away with racism, that's what I mean. These things are not going away. And we can sit here and pretend that it's not happening. But it's going to meet you at your front door one day. And I pray for each and every one of our souls. Because what's going here now, just think about it. We are in the twenty-first century and I can go get an AI app and it can record everything that I'm saying here. There was a, there was a two or three meetings ago, well, two or three years ago, I told the mayor, I said, mayor, the God I serve tell me that I have to love you. So I love you. I said, but you got a wicked heart. It was recorded as the mayor said, Sylvester said, he, he uh, he loves the mayor, but he don't agree with everything the mayor do. So when you change things and put in a different whole concept, a different whole content, come on, we're sitting here and we debating on this bull crap? That we all know what's going on. It's just a suppressive divorce. So people can't hear what was said because one, it embarrassed you. But this is a direct reflection of your city. And if you get off your ass and do something about it, then it wouldn't be a problem. Thank you. Leroy Bell, uh, first of all, my comment, I called the city clerk. And I told her my comment wasn't what was written in the minutes. And the reason I said it, and I wasn't, I was nice, called her, and we had a great uh, conversation. But what the problem with was that your buddy had came up in here with his hands out. Commissioner Diane was asking questions and stuff. You didn't like what I said, so you had it put in that Leroy Bell didn't say anything about this cutorio. And that's exactly what I spoke about. It's all about censorship. If anybody's saying anything good about you, you want that to be written out for, for verbatim. Myself, I agree. Ms. Bone have enough on her plate already. If it's just a snippet of what was said, a record, minutes are kept behind this wall out here, you got a, you got a, a cornerstone. And behind that cornerstone, one day it going to be moved and it going to have the events of the day. Who laid it? Who was in attendance? It going to have a newspaper back there of that day. And this is what this is. Public comment is the cornerstone of these commission meetings when it come down to public comment. Tonight, you look in there, Leroy Bell, Rod Olson, and whoever spoke. That was just saying that we was in attendance. Why would you have to duplicate that? That we was in attendance when you have it as a sign in sheet at the door? It's all about, this is the way that you, career politicians try to stay in office and in power. And, and the sad part about it, we got one coming from the county, a commission, a career commissioner trying to be mayor, going to do the same thing. That's Christine Moore.
Rod Olson, Olson thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. I hate to say this, but fifty-eight years ago, and at least, leave it to me, abnormal psych class. One of the things you learn there is how everyone sees simp- something different. Everyone has their own backpack. And in my backpack is all my life experience. That's why all of us could be looking at the same event. We all see something different. Every one of us sees something different. And there's nothing wrong. It doesn't mean I'm wrong, doesn't mean Roger's wrong, doesn't mean any of you are wrong. It just means we see things differently. I think the cleanest way, and I saw Abby pointing out to this one, there is a single line underneath subject that we're going to be talking about. For me today, I talked about a lot of things in three, just take out Susan, take out the mayor, take out anything else. Put down what the people put down in that slot. As long as it's not illegal, immoral, unethical, do it. For me today, infrastructure development and Northwest Regulatory Complex, all all-inclusive playground. That was my subject. Put those three after it and it's done. It's one line. And it takes away what people think Susan interpreted, what anyone else interpreted. It's what I put on that sheet. Thank you.
I, I agree with what wa- was just said, but another alternative, if possible, just scan in the green form. That is what I believe Orange County actually does because I've gone back and looked at my prior uh, comments at Orange County. So if you could just scan in the green form, if that's feasible. And then provide them to the mayor and commissioners.
Auburn became a three-six oh-three, Golden Garrow. Just as I'm at, somebody said just now that people sign in. I watched people walk in here tonight who don't sign in. So that sign in document isn't an accurate, an accurate record of who's in here anyway. But can we argue with Google? Can we argue with all the AI programs that are currently out there? No. These are industry standards. And what do these industry standards depend on? They depend on keywords. If we have keywords next to person's name, we can come back in four years and we could use an AI program to interrogate a database and have some idea of what that person who used to come here stood for, what their suggestions were. We can do research. Without keywords next to person's name, you might as well bury somebody in a grave without a headstone.
Well, I just got a couple of things. I think first of all, we probably should need to establish some private rules of order so we know exactly what to expect. Um, but in regards to public comment, I think there's several approaches to it. You can have your summary. But there can be an unofficial written document or verbatim, exactly what was said. So I, I don't think it's one or the other. It can be multiple ways. Because there again, we can, you know, talk, see, hear, but there's people that could be blind, deaf. Do we ever think about those people? So it's always one-sided. So we still need to take a post to, we're giving the information to the people that want us hearing in any manner that's necessary. So whether you like it or not, if it's in a public forum, what was said, whether you like it or not, just, just put it out there. But I, I don't think we should have to have a long debate about this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So we had a motion by Commissioner Smith. Who was the second? Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Oh, okay. Whatever. Okay, Commissioner Velazquez. All right. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four to one with Commissioner Nesta against. Okay, uh, Radley?
Mayor, just have one thing on the uh, list tonight. And that is to confirm the next Clearwater Lake Workshop, which we had tentatively set from Monday, September fifteenth at six PM. So just want to confirm that everybody's available for that and we can get that officially scheduled. Monday, September fifteenth at six PM.
Everybody good with that? Oh, Commissioner Nesta. Well, I just, I just want to, on that, that topic, oh, Radley, just let you know that I've reached out now, I think Stacy's for the third time to ask um, the HOA president from Clear Lake Landing to send us their HOA policy so I can get a quote that would include a pump station and yet he's not responding. So just, just for the record, for all the commissioners here, I've asked for a record because I, I want to get a quote, which would include the pump station and all their other amenities in a policy to show them that it can be done and how much additional cost would be. I can't do it in a vacuum. I have to have a policy to base it off of. So he's not giving me that information. Um, so we can't, you know, if, if, if you're really serious about, you know, looking at, if, if, if he's worried about it failing by lightning or hurricane or whatever, and he won't give us the opportunity to get, at least get him a quote, then that, that doesn't show. by lightning or hurricane or whatever, and he won't give us the opportunity to get, at least get him a quote, then that, that doesn't show.
Well, I think it's unfair that he's not here to be able to rebut that. So you're you're talking about his character and he's not even here to say anything about.
I've sent him three emails and he hasn't responded to any.
And how long did you not respond to him? Over months? Give him more than a week, maybe.
Okay.
Okay, so what time is that meeting?
Uh Monday, September fifteenth at six PM.
You, you good, Commissioner Velazquez?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Okay.
We'll confirm that.
Yep, alright. Thank you, Radley. That it? Okay, alright, just a couple of quick things. Uh everybody had a great um, the grand opening for Fire Station Six was a really a wonderful event. Thank you, Chief Sanchez and your team. That was a amazing uh opportunity. Yeah, we were, we were excited. Um second, just, I know there's a little smell around City Hall. We're, we're about three quarters of the way into painting and ripping off wallpaper that's been there since the probably the eighties. I mean, it's so uh the Lampier is our, is our contractor, painting contractor, doing a really nice job going, you know, room to room to room. Uh carpet, I guess, is somewhere in the, in the mix.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Okay, working on that. Um the Hispanic Heritage Festival, everybody put that on your calendar, September twentieth. Um it will be at Kettleland Nelson Park from four to eight. I think we've got, I want to say we've got sixteen vendors already signed up. Uh reached out to Tony Ortiz, who's the commissioner from City of Orlando. He's going to be our master of ceremony. So we're really excited about that. And last but not least, um we've got a team from our Parks and Rec going over to the FNGLA um trade show in Orlando on Friday. Um we got the team there that's going to donate a bunch of trees for us. And so we're excited to see what they have. As we look forward to um looking at a Century Garden there to to be a part of the all-inclusive playground. So FNGLA, big shout out to the, 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 all the members there that'll be donating trees and shrubs and annuals and herbs for us for, for our, our parks. So with that.